Welcome to the sixth meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. I am Brian Furz, the chairman, and I will ask my colleagues to introduce themselves starting on my left tonight while my colleague on the right closes the doors.
Alex Whiteside.
Oh.
Member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Tim Sherwinski, Assistant Town Planner. Sorry, Bill.
Liam Clark, Planning Director.
April Lamaro, member.
Cheryl Togaias, member.
Okay, thank you. Quick run-through of the agenda. We're going to have a couple of items of new business tonight for some A&amp;Rs, approved or not required plans, one at 321 Fairmont Street for joining two lots, one at 1259 Brushhill Road. We are going to have a public, three public hearings this evening. One will be continued. First one is Dennis and Martha Burke, special permit for cluster development, 245 Highland Street, which is continued from August 25th. That will begin at 7:15. We have scheduled at 7:30 the Carrick Realty Trust Special Permit for Central Ave Planned Unit Development at 131 Elliott Street, which is continued from September 7th. That will begin immediately following the 7:15 public hearing. And we have the 7:45 Polty Homes Special Permit for Cluster Development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site, which is also continued from September 7th. That will be opened immediately following the Carrick Realty Trust, but it will be continued immediately at the request of the applicant. We'll then have a public discussion on the 1672 Canton Ave Carberry Estate. Our next meeting dates currently scheduled are October 13th, October 27th, and November 10th. We have one member who has suggested October 27th will not work for them, and there's a chance that I may not be able to make it as well. So, we can discuss that at the October 13th meeting. I'll get clarification on my schedule if need be. We have some minutes to approve from the last meeting.
Comments on the 7th?
I have a comment, one comment.
For the 7th?
For the 7th.
Okay. Has it been submitted yet?
No.
All right. Do you want to share your comment?
Yes. On number six under, I guess above the last paragraph, I requested site section drawings indicating the areas of cut and fill.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that that got included.
Can you pass that down to Julia?
Yeah. Thanks.
These are my comments if anyone wants to look at them.
I'm fine with all of those. Mike Newsom.
And Mike Newsom.
Yep. And then Julia, could you remind us what other minutes we had open?
August 25th.
Okay. Which we had seen last hearing.
Yeah.
They were distributed, and you have comments, correct?
Yeah, and all the comments have been amended.
Right. Okay. And anything else? Okay. Mike, do you want to take a quick look at these, and we can approve the 7th and the 25th as amended?
There's also the executive session.
Okay.
There's two.
Anybody have comments on the executive session minutes? Alex, did you submit any?
Did I have comments on the executive session?
If you did, Eric had them.
Okay, so, okay. I don't, I'm not sure that, I always wonder about executive session minutes, whether or not we have to go into executive session to approve them.
No.
But, I would
Interesting.
Take a chance and move that we approve all the minutes as amended.
Second. Sorry, still moved.
And as amended means with these amendments that Mike is looking at right now.
Yep. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. He has to finish reading them.
Well, that was for the "all" discussion. Any discussion? All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now, we're going to move into citizen speak. If you are here this evening to speak on anything that is not before us for public hearing, which would be the ones I announced earlier, you can feel free to come forward and address the board now. Anybody wish to do so? Two folks, okay? Sir, go ahead. Come forward.
My name is Carl Cummings. I live at 50
Make sure you have a mic, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Carl Cummings. I live at 50 Hemingway Drive, Canton. I and a couple of others have some information we'd like to give to the board in its consideration of the A&amp;R for 1259 Brushhill Road. I'm happy to wait until that comes up and is submitted to you, but since it's not scheduled for a hearing, I didn't want to let this opportunity pass and then find out later that you wouldn't hear us.
Let's have you come up.
I'd wait.
Yeah, let's wait so you're part of the record.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Mr. Walker?
Does that include old business that I'll have a chance to speak at?
If you want to wait until the very end, you can, or you can speak now. It's up to you. We probably won't get to that until well after nine.
Okay. I'll speak now.
Okay. Thought so.
Wise choice.
Kevin Walker, please give us this. Cheryl?
I don't know who did.
Tim, what are we distributing right now?
This is something that Mr. Walker
Okay, thank you.
Send to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
We hired a Brooklyn scientist. We also hired an engineer.
So, this is from Mr. Walker?
Is Mr. Corcoran here?
I saw him poke his head in.
Actually, now I'm wondering about this because the applicant's not in the room.
Ned was across, or he did poke in, so is he across the hall? Should we check?
Bill's checking.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
So, I
Sure you introduce yourself.
Oh, Kevin Walker, 1776 Canton Ave.
Thank you.
The director butler to the proposed project up at the KC Farm Carberry Estate. Well, it was nice, I watched the tapes after I left, and the questions that were raised about, you know, what about 40B? And I listened about other projects, you know, let these developers put some skin in the game, okay? So, the developer comes with a concept and tries to get the zoning changed, and produces no models, no real plans. In fact
Hello.
In fact, in this development agreement that they're proposing, which is another smoke-and-mare tactic, it says conceptual site plan, okay? And it says, well, conceptual is forming of concepts, concept, a general idea or notion. There's more ambiguities in this here. We bid public construction work, a performance bond, a scope of work of what the developer is proposing is what is required. And when I hear about $10,000 haggling on a $10 million project, you're right, these developers have got to come to the table and spend the money. This developer said, well, we're waiting to get traction. Well, he's not waiting to get traction to get the zoning changed, okay? If you read through this thing, geez, abudders. The Walcott parties have made certain commitments to neighbors and abudders of the property and to the town. Well, I'm the major abudder. I haven't heard from them. They called, oh, we might want to meet with you. Oh, and I'll show you later, 30 feet from my property line is the proposed road. The engineer that I walked my property with tonight tells me, how are you going to clear this land with the grade? It's kind of, you're going to, it's not what it's showing here. And then I heard the word fear. 40B, Mr. Whiteside, fear and government don't go together. People can fear the government, and government can fear people, but there's no such thing as the government fearing a developer, okay? Liberty and tyranny. And when you give these developers carte blanche based on concepts, they're going to keep coming. This developer has other projects in this town. Let them develop it, but let them, let them develop it right. Where's the architecture? Here's the architecture at my house, okay? So, here we go. He's going to put two units in this and one unit in the Walcott. He's tearing this down, and he's tearing all these down. His whole proposal is everything that he's changing. Where are elevations? Where is real engineering? I forgot the balloon for my eight-year-old. I was going to do a balloon behind this, he did a balloon test. That's for an antenna or a cell tower. Let's see where the balloon is after you clear the land. It's, this, all he has to do is do a model of the property. Say, hey, you know, hire, you have every right to tell them to hire some experts. We're committed to you, but you're going to have to approve your architecture, you're going to have to show us what's going to happen here. If you read that, that proposal, oh my God, no one would sign. If you're going to have work done in your house, there's nothing to it, there's no substance. I'm hiring someone to do a 40B analysis of the property also, because I believe it is a threat that there isn't a lot of substance behind it, based on the location and based on the site. That other 40B didn't get built because of conditions. We raised that letter, they forgot the stream by my house. It's, you've got to tell these developers, this is probably the biggest project, right, in Milton's history? It's going to be $60,000, $70,000 in sales. This isn't something you decide based on a concept. So, here is the revised August 2016, okay? 30 feet from the horse trailer is this road here that's going to have 48 cars. Each place has two cars. Then you got deliveries. Now, is this the buffering and how he's been working with the abudders? Oh, geez, over here on Carberry Lane, they get a nice buffer. It's their backyard. This is my side, back, and front. This guy has shown, excuse me, developer, good faith. Hey, I've come up here every time. My phone doesn't ring. He has my number. And I'm telling you, townhouses are not appropriate. Build some buildings that are going to fit in, use the same style. Do you want me to bring the one up from Woodmere? Again? It's shameful, Woodmere. You're an architect. Are you proud of that, Mr. Whiteside?
I'm a lawyer.
Are you a lawyer?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were an architect.
It's even worse.
Okay, let's, please, keep this
I know. Well, listen
On topic, okay? No personal comments
You're not, you're not the one. I believe I will lose a third of my property value, okay? And I'm the one who's not spending time with my kids. And I'm the one who read your quote, no townhouse is on hillside. Say that about this. Tell the developer to step up. You've got the prime piece of property, let's see some substance. What are you putting there? How are you going to clear this land? What are you doing for the abudders?
So, I just want to interrupt you just for a minute, if you don't mind, because there's not an application before this board.
Yeah.
There is not an application before this.
So, there shouldn't
There's not even a proposed zoning change before this board.
Okay.
So, we are in a public discussion about what the applicant is thinking about doing, but some of the items you're asking for, you know, we don't, we don't have a project in front of us.
Okay.
So, I just, I just want to be careful
You know
Because you're being, excuse me, for one minute.
Okay.
You're being, you're directing some generalized comments towards some specific board members. I'd ask you not to do that as part of your comments.
Well, if somebody says something on the board that's truthful and contradicts what I believe the board should be doing, I don't see fearful as being in the job description. Now, the developer has made it very clear that they want the zoning to go to, is the town meeting in February?
I don't think it's been announced yet, but it will be on a town meeting.
Well, it's right in, they're saying they want it February.
Okay.
Okay, so, if they want it February, when are they going to start bringing this stuff to the table? Oh, you know why? Because they want to wait till the end and slam it through. That's my opinion. Second. Okay. Here's the proposal that he put out there. I don't know what it is because it's 30,000 square foot lots, single-family homes. I don't know why it's relevant, because it's not allowed. So, when he does finally bring substance to the table, what is the timeframe that's allowed for? What is the time period that it takes to take substance, a substantive proposal, to get it to town meeting? Because then, if you tell me X amount of months, and he has to do steps A, B, and C, then I don't have to keep coming here every time I find out something new about the project.
Well, I think what I could answer to that is you'll have, there will be a public process. It will take as long as it takes, and the board is not under any obligation to get him into a specific town meeting. So, if the application isn't ready, it isn't ready, or the, what he's asking the board to endorse in this case. So, you will certainly have your opportunities to comment as part of a public process, and like, this board has a long history of leaving the public hearings open until the very last minute before we have to close it.
Will
We will entertain
Will the board
We will entertain, we will entertain public comments all the way through, as long as there's new information coming in, we will remain open for public comment.
Will the board, does the board expect more substantive information on a development? Or is it, is conceptual acceptable?
I think we won't know what's even
No, I'm talking about a gin
Acceptable until something's proposed before us. There's specific criteria about what you have to submit in the zoning bylaws. Right now, there's nothing in front of us.
No, to change the zoning, I'm talking
To change the zoning, he needs to bring forward an application, and the board's going to either endorse it or not endorse it. The board can't approve a zoning bylaw change. So, the board will either endorse it to town meeting, or it won't endorse it, or it will take no position, one of those three steps. This will all go to town meeting before the planning board has any ability to make any decisions on this. We have no, we have no authorization to make any approval or nonapproval of this project until town meeting gives us direction.
Do you think that the conceptual plan that he's put forward is what Upper Canton Ave should get? Townhouses like that?
I'm not going to comment on that as an individual.
We'll be discussing
How about as the chairman of the board?
Well, we'll talk about it later on tonight.
Brian.
We're outside of citizen speak right now. We're in a discussion. So, if you have further comments
Yeah, I will, I will keep talking.
Wrap it up, because we have a couple of public hearings. We don't usually get this much in Down the Road on citizen speak. So, if you want to defer some of your comments for the, after the, you know, for the discussion period, we can do that.
No, I'm happy with what I've said.
Okay.
I could go on and on. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we are at 7:22. Yes, Mr. Clark?
7:21.
Sorry?
The A&amp;Rs.
The A&amp;Rs, yep. You're right. Sorry. All right, so new business will go to 321 Fairmont Street, joining of two lots. Applicant can come forward, please.
321 Fairmont Ave.
I'm sorry, yes, Fairmont Ave. Okay, is it Fairmont Ave? It's Fairmont Street on our agenda. Fairmont Ave. Okay. No problem.
Application says Ave, okay.
I was reading the agenda, sorry about that.
With us are Michael Letch and Martha Goldsmith. They are the owners of 321 Fairmont Ave. The plan before you shows two lots owned by the applicants. The request is to extinguish the lot line between their two parcels so that the parcel becomes one. It's as simple as that.
It is as simple as that, and I move that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Brian, not that there probably is, but did we give anybody else the opportunity for citizen speak?
Oh, for citizen speak.
I just think we just kind of
You're right.
Because of the consumed time, I think we just
I'm sorry. Mr. Joyce made, or, excuse me, Michael's made, Mr. Kelly's made a good point here. Anybody else wish to speak for citizen speak? I accidentally didn't finish citizen speak.
I will join my colleague and neighbor after
Okay, great. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Anyone else for citizen speak? Okay. We have one more A&amp;R for 1259 Brushhill Road. It's an A&amp;R lot, residential double A A&amp;R lots from a 13.74 acre parcel, five residential lots. Come forward, please. Hello.
Good evening. Dave Crispin with the VSC Group, civil engineer and land surveyor. I hope you introduce yourself.
Mary McCetrick, attorney for the applicants, and we also have with us this evening Jess Holmes and Matt Scheller, who both grew up on the property, and they're belong to the family trust that owns the property. But David Crispin's going to do the presentation. He prepared the application and did a pretty thorough job.
If you see the sheet behind you, that's the west half of the property. I've put it on one sheet on this, if you choose to see it, feed away. Back in the '40s, Hemingway Road was laid out and endorsed by this board, you know, prior members. The Avenue A across the bottom of the sheet there was actually laid out in 1911. So, we believe that this meets the qualifications for an approval not required, having the requisite 80,000 square foot minimum and the minimum frontage. There is one existing building to the left, right where the hand was there, I don't know who's got the most, but right there is the house. The rest of this site is undeveloped, and that's really about where it is at this point. So, we believe it's eligible for an A&amp;R endorsement. We've talked with Mr. Clark, and here we are.
Any comments from the board? Or
I'm looking forward to hearing
Understood.
Of others.
All right.
They have comments later on.
Understood that as well. So, I'm going to ask you all to just step back for a moment so we can have some public folks come up who want to speak for this that we've put off since citizen speak.
Yes.
Is there an extra copy so we could look at it while you're speaking? Brian, you have a copy?
I do, thank you.
You have one?
I do, yep.
Sorry, I thought you said did you have one?
Again, Carl Cummings, 50 Hemingway Drive, Canton. This document, a lot of it is, sort of like the application itself, is attachments, and really, the most pertinent part is just the two pages at the beginning. And we're, I, some of us are here, but
I'm sorry.
Vinky is here, and I too
7:15 here.
Yeah, I said 7:15.
We'll start as soon as this is over.
Yeah, understood. Sorry, sir, go ahead. We don't need to say it, it's fine. Go ahead.
To bring to the board's attention some issues that we think make this not appropriate for an endorsement as an A&amp;R. One is that we consider this property subject to a restriction covenant which limits it to six-acre minimum subdivision. I think it's safe to say, since the applicants are here, they don't agree, but, but we think it's pretty clear, and we've got, that's stated in here, and we've got the attachments. Has to do with covenants between this property and other properties, including mine, which is why I'm here, even though I'm not a, not a director butler quite, and I'm not a citizen of Milton, but my property is subject to some of the same restrictions. We also think there are some inaccuracies in the application. The number of homes and lots is not, is not correct in the application, we don't believe that are on Hemingway Drive. And there is, there's a statement in the application that the property is, that Hemingway Drive is rarely used to get to Brushhill Road by people on Hemingway Drive. We, we would just state out flatly that that's incorrect. Everyone who lives on Hemingway Drive uses it to get to Brushhill Road. No one in his right mind would go out and try and turn left off of Green Street instead. But, I've thought about why that statement is even in there, and I think the reason must relate to the statutory requirement and the Milton zoning bylaw, which says, they're relying on you accepting a way in existence. And in the stat, I'll just read the statute, but it's repeated in the zoning bylaw, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, says a way in existence can be used, I was going to skip a few words, when in the way in existence, having in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon. You may already all be familiar with this, going back to Milton Mews, Hemingway Drive is, is not wide. There's a wider right-of-way, but, you know, God forbid, or the planning board forbid that this road would actually get expanded and have sidewalks added or whatever would be taken. It's not wide. It's not road, I don't know what you call it, road grade, Nick can address this, but we, those of us that live on the drive pay in every year to try and fill potholes and make repairs, which are very frequent because it's a driveway-grade construction. So, I'm not, I'm not suggesting all of these things would be settled tonight. Really, the point of this is to say, we don't think this is an A&amp;R situation. It's not as simple as, we've got 13 acres, we can break it into five or six lots, whatever it is, and we've all got frontage. We don't think it's adequate, it doesn't meet the requirements, or shouldn't meet the requirements that you should be looking for in a, in essentially what is a subdivision seeking to be approved, but approval not required. And I think the other thing we have is some discussion about some of the conservation issues there, which I don't think are fully reflected on this plan. And for that, I would ask, Mr. Vinky, here's a little more, plug into that to address you.
My name's Nick Vinky. I live at 60 Hemingway Drive, lived there for the past 12 years. It's also known as, I like to say in these meetings, as 1359 Brushhill Road, Milton. That's where I get my electric bills. I'm, I guess I've been volunteered to do a couple of things on the drive. One is snow removal, so I just kind of organize that, and the other is road repair. So, over the years, I've met with different contractors, and they've explained to me, much to our regret, that this is driveway-grade, so it is not road-grade material. We have constantly a lot of repairs. Some residents like it in a disrepair because it slows down traffic, others feel that, so we try to have a balance there. But the main point is, it is a continuous process of repair. And this is something that the residents vote on every year, how much to repair, and having an A&amp;R come through without being notified with four new homes is certainly going to impact
It's not as simple as, we've got 13 acres, we can break it into five or six lots, whatever it is, and we've all got frontage. We don't think it's adequate, it doesn't meet the requirements, shouldn't meet the requirements that you should be looking for in a, in essentially what is a subdivision seeking to be approved, but approval not required. And I think the other thing we have is some discussion about some of the conservation issues there, which I don't think are fully reflected on this plan. And for that, I would ask, Mr. Vinky, use a little more plug in that to, to address you.
My name's Nick Vinky. I live at 60 Hemingway Drive, lived there for the past 12 years. It's also known as, I like to say in these meetings, as 1359 Brush Hill Road, Milton, that's where I get my electric bills. I'm, I guess I've been volunteered to do a couple of things on the drive. One is snow removal, so I just kind of organize that, and the other is road repair. So over the years, I've met with different contractors, and they've explained to me, much to our regret, that this is driveway grade, so it is not road grade material. We have constantly a lot of repairs. Some residents like it in a disrepair because it slows down traffic, others feel that, so we try to have a balance there. But the main point is, it is a continuous process of, of repair. And this is something that the, the residents vote on every year, how much to repair, and having an A and R come through without being notified with four new homes is certainly going to impact, impact the road. I'm a veteran of the Milton Mews program, as many of you are, so I have, you know, maybe as a way of bringing that forward. We're probably in the unwinding phase here. The Trung Do property has found a happy new owner with Mr. Samuels here, and the Piper property has had its subdivision, and that seems to have been to everybody's satisfaction. We think of ourselves as stewards of the land, and for that reason, we have signed continuation for another 20 years of a series of documents that restrict the land, and in particular, Book 4433, which restricts it to six acre minimum zoning. And the folks that have participated have sacrificed substantially, so we're talking millions of dollars of alternate uses that could have happened, when you take 30, what we're talking here, 86 acres, total over 100 acres. So there's a real commitment to preserving the land. And we do feel like we are stewards. So what I'm going to do is just quickly run through some of the things, I'm not, you know, the zoning expert, but these are things that did come up in, in my sense, and I apologize if I go through this in a way that it's laid out here in the, in the bylaws. But Hemingway Drive is a scenic drive, a scenic road, and that was voted on majority of Canton Town Hall. The majority of the road is in Canton. I'm not sure what case law is in terms of what the effect is in Milton, but it's nonetheless, if it was, what it says here is the planning board, after consulting with the Conservation Historical Commission, accordance with procedures specified herein, so that is a factor. Wetlands, the bylaw there states activities deemed to have significant effect on wetlands' values, groundwater protection, interests protected by wildlife, recreation, aesthetics, these are protected interests. And no person shall remove, fill, dredge, or build within 100 feet, and among other things, freshwater wetland, marsh, bog, and swamp. So looking at that, and then understanding, and I think I've talked to this committee before about the history here of the area, familiar with the Fowl Meadow Natural Resources, a study that was done back in, I guess it's the 60s, this led to the first ACEC in Massachusetts, so area of critical environmental concern. So the area that we live in is the first and arguably the most sensitive ACEC in the state of Massachusetts, and this is according to the Secretary of State, State of Massachusetts. That ACEC extends a wide area, and just, I guess for the record, I'll pass that out In terms of ACEC... What I'm trying to find is the regulations on ACEC, but basically, it states that the property is for... If I could find it here, mine, there's too many papers. Here it is, okay. So ACEC... All right, it's important to understand the ACEC goals are not achieved only through state regulations. The purpose of the ACEC designation, the long-term, is the long-term preservation, management, and stewardship of critical resource ecosystems, and cannot be accomplished through state regulations or programs alone. The stewardship of these resources is the responsibility shared by all citizens. From a practical perspective, the goals of an ACEC designation can be achieved only through cooperation and collaboration, collaborative efforts involving all of us, private and public organizations, government agencies, local officials, civic and environmental organizations, and residents of ACEC communities. The ACEC addresses further that the proponent of any project defined in the regulations, located within an ACEC must file an environmental notification, E and E, unless the project consists solely of one single family dwelling. Those on any such project located within ACEC, regardless of size, unless it consists solely of one single family dwelling, must undergo MEPA review. Some state, federal, regional, municipal agencies, as well as private organizations and individuals, all have an opportunity to provide public comment. So those are, so that goes on to say, there's a higher performance standard that also applies to inland water, wetlands, resources known as bordering vegetative wetland, which is in the plans that you, you are reviewing. So it is quite significant. We have located at least three species that are endangered on the property. There is the pale green orchid, there is the Hemaris gracillus, which is the slender clear winged hummingbird, or mimics a hummingbird, moth, I guess, yep, and then finally, the blue salamander. And they have, this, the ecosystem that exists there, and I'll just address the blue salamander, they live for all but a short period of time, eight feet underground in upland terrain. Then in the spring, they come down and they spawn in the vernal pool. So they're vernal pools quite near this property. I've been out in the DCR land with biologists, and we've had people from the National Heritage Endangered Species, I've talked with Dr. Frank, and we've had a biologist come out, and they were so thrilled that we had found one of these species here, one of the plants that they came out. So it is a very significant area. It's hard to, for people to appreciate sometimes, but it is, it is, it is there, and it has, you know, survived, because really, it is a bog, for, we're talking about a transition between marsh, bog, tree bog, and then upland. So those are, I think that, those items there. What I did want to share with you then is, I took the map that was done by, what would you call it there, the survey group for Milton Mews, and I placed on it the properties that we're talking about here. And, let's pass these around here, just keep one. It's all, there's copies, so.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Time around requirement? Yeah.
So what I want to really call your attention to are the green lines. So if I take Lot E, I've put in red the wetland, and I've put in green here where the border that's been submitted comes out. And you can see that it goes into the red line, so in other words, it invades what is previously reported as, as wetland area. Likewise, when you go to Lot B, which is in the upper left-hand corner, the, the border is, is quite substantially in the wetland on the upper, upper left side. And further with Lot C, we also have an invasion. And if it was normal terrain, if this was not ACEC, one could say, okay, but it is ACEC, and the bar is higher for that. And if there are questions here, I think you've seen these maps, we've used these maps before. With the CONCON, they find it acceptable, the chairman's ruled on that, because it is an official document. This has been up on the website here in Canton for some time, with the whole Milton Mews information. Then the last thing is more of my personal interest, but it does relate to the significance, I think, of the area, and that has to do with the archaeological significance. Through, through these deliberations, I've come to learn that Naposet was once a lake, it's a glacial lake, five miles by three and a half miles. So in prehistoric times, the ancients, as they were called, who lived here, they would fish there and they would do their, if you want to call it, mining in the Blue Hills. And they would come, the significance of this is they would come from very far away. This was a center, this was like Detroit or Silicon Valley for the Northeast. People would come from New Hampshire, Albany, they'd come here and they'd spend the season, the summer season, gathering the stones, the stones. And why here? Because there's a seismic fault which formed very hard rock. We've had Dr. Bagley out, he's given us a tour, he's the archaeological, official archaeologist of the city of Boston, and his hobby, what he loves is Blue Hills and the fact that it was really a center of manufacturing. And when he says center of manufacturing, this is pre bow and arrow, we're talking Adal Adal Spears, we're talking, then the tools that they used to dig out canoes, that kind of thing. And there are, you know, remnants of what you can see is workshops around. On Hemingway Drive, at one end, there is a site that has yielded over 1,000 artifacts. It's now been covered up, but this area has that kind of history, similar to Signal, Signal Hill, or otherwise known as Wamseta, which you can see off 95, but which is protected with bob wire because it's inside the, I think the Con Edison or, or some of the grounds there. So that's another element that's here. Why is this significant all of a sudden? Well, the center of, of the controversy which is now being accepted is that what we learned that North America was settled from, by people coming over the Aleutian Trail, is no longer correct. And the way you get to that is by basically archaeological forensics. You look at how the stones are carved, and the carving on the stones that are found in this area do not match the Solutrian, or do not match the Asian path. They match a North Atlantic path, which was considered heresy a few years ago, but now it's, you know, it's out and published, and, you know, the archaeologists are accepting this. And this is really, you know, for, if you're an archaeologist, and I'm not, but they are quite excited about this, but it does really say, the resources in this area are not to be minimized. Wakefield Estate is just up the road, the boys and girls from the Boston City Schools come out, they learn about, they're, they're thrilled with putting stones, that's the highlight when they come out, they don't really get to see that. And this is the kind of remnant that will disappear if we do not have that partnership between private citizens that are putting in substantial of their own wealth, giving it up to protect this land, and you folks, the, representing the citizens of the town. I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One, yep, one second, just going to let them, unless you want to just join them at the table, that's fine.
Sure.
Okay, sure, go ahead. And then, we're going to, go ahead.
I just wanted to, so, hi, Denny Swinson, 65 Green Street. My, my husband's property is also subject to similar mirroring, mutually beneficial covenants and restrictions, as are, I think, 12 or 14 of the property owners in this neighborhood. I just wanted to restate some of what Carl had said. There are three things on the application that are incorrect. It states that Hemingway Drive currently services 10 homes on 12 lots located in Canton, that number is wrong. Second, there is more than one home in Milton. And third, the language material, materially omits the mention that residents of Canton Homes use Hemingway Drive on a daily basis. The application also fails to disclose that the property proposed to be subdivided is subject to a restriction that cannot be less than six acres. That's 4433, page 68, and this is referenced in the Scheller deed that they provided in their application. And we've also, in that first packet that we handed out, provided the extension of those restrictions, so I just wanted to reaffirm that.
Thank you. Everybody else all set? Anyone else wants to speak to this? Okay, before the board goes to discussion, I just want to quickly have Mr. Clark help the board parse out everything that's come before us now, and let us know what we're, what an A and R, just kind of remind us what an A and R is for both the board and the public audience, so that we know what we need to be discussing and considering here, because there was a lot of information just given to us.
Okay. On to scenic road. Hemingway Drive and Avenue A, neither one are scenic roads in the town of Milton. First, as general law, chapter 40, S, sorry, chapter 40, section 15c, which states what a scenic road can be. It states that it has to be on a public way. Each of these is private ways, so they're not eligible for scenic road designation. The A and R, a form A lot. In a double A area, they need to have 150 feet of frontage, they need to have 80,000 square feet of land area.
Sorry, can you say that again, Bill, the numbers?
150 feet of frontage, 80,000 square feet of square foot area. Each one of these...
150 foot of frontage on what?
On a way.
Okay, a public way.
On a listed way within the town.
Well, that's my question, a public way or anyway?
No, a way. A way that has been listed by the town. It's in your, it's in your definitions, in your zoning.
Definition of street.
Which is actually called out right in front of you. Go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
40R.
No, no, it's definition of street in our...
Yes, but what did you say A and R statute is? Chapter... 40, chapter 45, chapter 15c, is that right? So you just...
On a way.
I know, but what's the chapter, the MGL for A and R? Do you know that? Did you decide it, or was I a mis...
I can't say.
That was a scenic way when I gave you. That's okay.
This is right here.
Thank you.
Thunder, chapter 48, section 81m.
Can I look at my computer? No, okay, thank you.
The principal object of the law is to ensure efficient vehicle access to each lot in the subdivision for safety, convenience, and welfare, dependent critically on that factor. factor. Do you want the A&R book?
No, we'll get-
It's cited on the first page of the memo. Which identifies the issue quite succinctly.
Well, actually, you said that the, just to clarify, you said that an A&R lot requires frontage on a, you said street, I believe.
I did say a street.
Okay.
Because that's what our zoning requires.
Okay. I see. So I'm reading MGL, and then you're saying our zoning takes it from way to street in our zoning. I understand now. I understand this distinction.
But the idea of a way in existence in 1938 having suitable grades, adequate construction to support the new lot, I mean, that is the issue. Are Avenue A and Hemingway Drive adequate in construction, in our view-
To be considered, right.
-to service the new lots? And of course, if they're not, if we, I mean, I'm going to suggest that we take a site walk, take a look at these streets. But if they're not adequate, the applicant is not without recourse, because the applicant might then say to his neighbors, I'm going to improve the streets. I'm going to widen Hemingway Drive and Avenue A so that they are adequate. And he might do that, he or she might do that by just saying this, is I have the right to maintain the street and I'm going to do it. Or potentially, he could file for a subdivision. And then the planning board would dictate what sort of streets Avenue A and Hemingway Drive would have to become if there were to be a subdivision. So the people have to, when we go and take a look at these things, we need some hard, realistic thought given to these, because, you know, it is, the streets can be improved when we're in another. If there is a restriction, a deed restriction, that's something else again, but we're not the deed restriction people. But even if we approved an A&R plan, a lot subject to the restriction would not be a qualifying lot, because it wouldn't have six acres, if there is a restriction.
Right.
But I am going to suggest that we ask the applicant to continue the time for our decision. We're under the obligation to render a decision on this application within 20 days of its filing. And so we've got-
Which is tonight?
What?
Which is tonight?
Is it today?
Oh, no, no.
No, I think we've got 10 days to go. But we would want additional 30 days to take a site visit. And we would want the, I would think we would want the various people involved here to give this some thought as to whether or not something can be done that would be agreeable mutually.
Just a couple, yep, I agree. A couple other quick things. The wetlands were brought up, that's really a conservation commission issue, so on an A&R application, we don't have any purview on that, but we note it, but it's a conservation issue. And then Mr. Whiteside addressed the deed issue. So I think we have a question for the applicant, if the applicant wants to come back forward again and respond to the request from the board.
Do you want me to respond to some of the comments, or shall I wait and see what other questions we have?
I think, first of all, I think, well, does anyone else have any questions? That's a great, that's a great point.
I think that you should, she should be able to address the comments.
Yeah, you can definitely just comment, I want to see if there are other questions.
But-
On the point of the AC/EC and other, you know, the historic issues, those are state permitting issues that I think are going to make it a very challenging, potentially make these very challenging parcels to permit, but I don't know if we need to hear comment on that.
It's not our-
Because that's not our purview.
It's not our purview.
So I just want to, I don't think we're expected to hear anything on the AC/EC and the archaeological impacts, because that frankly isn't-
Yeah, April makes a good point. You know, we're not under, we don't have the purview of conservation, we don't have the purview of AC/EC, we don't have a purview of scenic roads. So you can, to the extent you wish to address those, you may, but ultimately, I think the board is not going to take them into consideration for the purposes of this application.
In the interest of time for your schedule-
That would be great, yes.
Knowing that the client has already said 30 days is not an issue.
Mm-hmm.
I understand you'd probably continue it, pick a site date, and we'll convene again, and we'll have responses for all of these for you at that time.
That sounds excellent.
Perfect. Just, in general, you should know, I believe everyone does, that we are before the Conservation Commission. It was continued, so we haven't had the hearing yet. It's going to be the 11th of October. There will be a Conservation Commission site walk on October 11th. It's all, you know, public notice already.
It's a Saturday.
It's Saturday. And so the wetlands, AC/EC issues, endangered species issues, I have no doubt will come up in that discussion.
Eighth.
The eighth is the site walk, yep. So, yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything we can say about that today. In general, I just wanted to say, as a matter of perspective, one reason the A&R approach has been proposed was to, recognizing that there will be some subdivision, that will be some kind of division of land here, it's a very large piece of land. It is not currently restricted, other than by zoning, other than easements relating to the roadway and access of the neighbors back and forth across the roadway, which exist and have for many, many years. The reason is to lessen impact and to keep the area to the extent possible as it currently appears. Will be changed if there are more house lots added, but there's more flexibility with an A&R for the, with the roadway, providing that it's safe and accessible, than there is with a subdivision application, although the planning board has some discretion with that as well. So I want it to be clearly understood that the reason that this is coming in as an A&R application is that for the same reasons that the neighbors are pointing out to you make this area very special and is an area of concern, that it's an attempt to keep the development looking, the area looking as much as possible the way it currently does. As far as the restrictions go, I will give you a memo on that. We've researched all of the restrictions, the ones referred to by the neighbors, possibly only to the extent that that particular restriction, which is tied to certain lots in Canton, allows access across this piece of land. There are references to that in the deed that the shellers received, and that is the significance of that reference. It is not that the deed restriction applies to these lots. And I can demonstrate that because the language of the restriction clearly establishes that it applies to the lots and the owners who are parties to that restriction, and I'll give you the exact language. There was an earlier deed restriction just on this lot. It was not limited in years, and it has expired because at law-
It was limited.
Well, no. It expired at law because restrictions on real estate are limited to 30 years under Massachusetts law. So in 2011, that restriction expired, which is why we're looking at this development option at this time.
As Mr. Whiteside pointed out, we are not the deed restriction police. Feel free to draft your memo.
And then, and then just, I think I agree, you know, with Mr. Clark's review, basically, of what's required for an A&R. But, you know, there are really two requirements. One is that you have frontage required by the zoning bylaw on a way or a road that fits and meets the requirements of the subdivision control law, as it applies to an A&R lot, and to the zoning bylaw, so that you can say you have frontage, which is why you have to look at both definitions. But they're fairly similar. They have three categories. One is a regular public way, another one is a subdivision road, and the third category is a way that was in existence for a certain period of time and has suitable construction, adequate grades, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the basic task in terms of deciding whether an A&R plan should be approved.
Great.
Should we do it the 11th?
Well, we can't meet on the 11th because we have a Conservation Commission here.
Well, we were gonna try to tie them together. I think we were gonna suggest we just do the site walk the same time.
It's the eighth, I'm sorry.
It's the eighth.
The eighth is a Saturday, the 11th is a Tuesday. They go to CONCON's meeting on Tuesday.
I think Mr. Whiteside meant, I think he meant the eighth.
What's the date?
October 8th.
Oh.
Really don't want to, how about a Wednesday evening?
I'd prefer a weeknight evening if the board is, I'm unable of that, as opposed to a weekend.
We could do that.
28?
Friday night?
No, September 28th.
Oh. I can't do it.
You're not?
About the 5th.
I'll be in New York. But we don't all have to be able to go.
Yeah, do the 28th.
We can go separately.
Do the 28th and I'll do my-
I'm very familiar with the road, so.
I can do the 28th.
28, 28.
I have a ton of administrative search coming.
No.
That's next week.
Yep.
Yes, next Wednesday.
I think I'm doing something next Wednesday. But I can go out and look at these things.
29, if you want.
I-
Maybe a Wednesday, but you could go Thursday.
I can, I can go and look at that, those two roads-
Yes, you can.
-without a site walk. But let's do, if we've got two 28ths, let's do it then, and-
Yeah, I can do the, I can do the 29th as well.
Well, so you and I can do the 28th?
I can do the 28th as well.
So that's-
28, 28, 28.
Are we only gonna have two of us there?
Oh, wait, you can do the 20?
No, no.
They, the three of them can't do the 28th.
Just do the, if you can all do the 5th, I'll just go, I-
Or we can do October 8th.
8th.
That's a Saturday morning.
Which is, which is-
It is not. The 11th is a Saturday. The 8th is a Saturday, right.
8th is a Saturday. If you all want to do the 8th, that's fine.
Wednesday before that, the 5th?
I'm not sure I'll be here.
The 5th, October 5th.
Oh, I'll be in New York, but feel free to go without me.
5?
5.
5?
What, the 5th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes and yes. I get four. We're going on the 5th.
Go on the 5th.
What's-
It has to be 6.
Getting dark. But that's, we'll be done in half an hour. 6 or 6, 6? 6?
Mm-hmm.
6 o'clock.
And shall we continue the hearing to the 13th?
6 o'clock on the 5th.
What are we looking like on the 13th?
It's not a hearing.
The A&R, you're right, it's not a hearing. Shall we continue the-
We just need the, we just need the applicant to agree to extend the time within which we can-
And we'll just do it as old business, it'll just stay on the agenda. Got it.
And then put it as an agenda item next meeting.
Okay, great.
Yes, they're good.
We will agree, do you need a letter from us, or do you just?
A letter would be, would be-
That would be very nice, thank you.
Great. One of your famous-
This note will be a nice short letter, to extend for 30 days from the date of filing, from today's date, what-
Today's date, please.
Today's date. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. At long last, we're gonna get to our 7:15 public hearing for Dennis and Martha Burke, special permit for cluster development, 245 Highland Street, which is continued from August 25th. If you are here for the 7:30 Carrick Realty Trust hearing, that will be continued.
Oh, we're not hearing from anybody tonight?
That was just sent to me in a text message.
Do you want your children to come too?
I should repeat that, because I see some-
I am going to repeat it.
A million reasons.
And a million reasons, exactly.
Sorry? Yeah. I know, they can come.
And just to re, just to restate what I just said, in case anyone didn't hear me, the Carrick Realty Trust public hearing scheduled for 7:30 has been, will be continued when it opens. There will be no testimony on that this evening.
When are we going to continue that?
Well, we're gonna open it and continue it when we get there, so let's go through this first. Oh, because people are here? Why don't we quickly open that? Let's quickly open the, do you mind just, okay, we're gonna quickly open the 7:30 Carrick Realty Trust hearing, special permit for Central Ave Plan Unit Development, 131 Elliott Street, which was continued from September 7th. And can I have a motion to continue to October 13th at, Tim?
7:30.
7:30?
Turned moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry, 7:15. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us back. Ned Corcoran, here on behalf of Martha Burke, who joins me at the table, and her husband, Dennis, who are the owners of the property at 245 Highland Street.
Ned, do you mind if I interrupt for just one second? Mike was absent for the last time that this public hearing was open, on August 11th. I have a-
Got it.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. So when we were last here on the 11th, I think we had a, on August 11th, we talked about the notion of adjusting from an eight-lot subdivision to a seven-lot subdivision, excuse me, clustered subdivision. And Martha Burke has prepared, and we've handed copies of an adjustment to the, to the proposed development. We think that this is a better plan. It preserves a little bit more of the frontage on Highland Street for its open space. And basically, the idea would be to eliminate the lot that was sort of surrounded by other lots, and reallocate those, the square footages, to each of the other lots, so that each lot is roughly 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. They pull the green space on Highland Street into the property so that it gets a larger buffer, particularly on the left-hand side of the driveway. It narrows a little bit the green space between the properties and Fletcher Steel. Doesn't make any significant changes to the green space otherwise. And so the notion is that this plan, seven lots, as opposed to eight, is a better plan physically and presumably less impactful with respect to the neighbors if there's one fewer property.
Do you have any approximate dimensions you can associate with this plan? For instance, what the measurement on the buffers are, what the reduction is, what the, you know, I hear you say the 20 to 25, and I see you have 20 to 25 marked on here, but can you give us any idea on the reduction?
So the, yeah, so the, the buffer on the right-hand side of the driveway is set at 80 feet back off of the property line. The buffer on the left-hand side was approximately 60 feet, pulling that back to 80. On the Fletcher Steel side, it drops from approximately 60 to 40 to 45 feet.
Sorry, can you repeat that? Sorry, 60 to 45?
This is not an engineered plan.
I understand.
So one of the things that we would do, and we're gonna ask for it tonight, is a sense of the board, whether it's willing to support a seven-lot clustered development, because if it is, we need to go back to the engineer to redraw the plan. We need to light up the town's consulting engineer with respect to the stormwater drainage analysis. We've put that on hold. And then continue forward with a seven-lot plan or pursue an alternative.
That's a tough one, thank you.
The red lines show the original layouts of each of the properties. The green lines now show the adjustment. So there's a approximately five to 10-foot reduction in a portion of the setback on the Highland Street Realty Trust property line. Essentially, you end up with the same amount of open space. 35% of the property, approximately three acres, would be dedicated to open space and deeded to the Conservation Commission as the entity that would receive title to assure the long-term preservation of that open space. The driveway continues to remain its current location, although widened from 12 feet to 18 feet. And otherwise, as you see, each of the lots, the lot that is second in on the right, which was 15,000 square- which was 15,000 square feet, would be increased to 20. And lots on the left-hand side would be increased from a minimum of 17,000. And otherwise, two lots at 23,000. Each of those three would be increased to 25,000 square feet. So slightly larger lots. So Martha Burke, who has drawn this plan, has spent a significant amount of time with neighbors and abutters. She has petition, copies of signatures that we'll hand out of those who support. We have a breakdown of those who we understand who have said yes, some who we understand are neutral, some who we understand to be in opposition. We've got a set of emails to hand in. And Martha would like to read a statement and would like to read a couple of the supporting emails from Director Butters in support of this change, one of whom's family had signed in opposition to the eight-lot subdivision, but likes the alternative at 7.
Do we have those?
And I have copies of all of those to hand to the board.
Okay.
First, I just wanna thank the board and any neighbors who came to walk the property. I grew up in Milton and returned here to raise my family about 30 years ago. That same year, I had to drag my husband out of South Boston, but he managed to like it here. We intend to stay here. My child intends to stay here, and my grandchildren are staying here. Various people have expressed concerns about the special permit. Some of them legitimate. I've listened and I think I've compromised. The property is going to be developed either using six one-acre lots, which interfere with the street view, the wooded area, and open space, or seven half-acre to one-acre lots, leaving a good buffer, especially on Highland Street, and some open space intact. So the concerns are... The first concern was loss of surrounding property value. Certainly, people have worked hard to own and maintain their homes here. I don't agree that values will fall. The properties will cost approximately 1.4 million to build each. And so that's in line with the surrounding property values that are already there. Mr. Clark told us he asked neighboring towns if cluster zoning affected their prices, and he did not find that. And Alora Cahill, who's a premier real estate agent in town, has examples of the hot property market in Milton. Second concern is that construction will cause water problems, and this is true. So I think the six-lot plan would be necessary to remove many more trees. The tanks have to go in the corner where there's some significant trees and on the alley to the Gamble Estate. And no trees can be planted to within, I think it's 30 feet of the tanks. So those trees will be gone for sure. In the seven cluster plan, the retention tanks can fit on either side of the existing driveway where there are already less trees. One side has no trees and one side has fewer trees than the corner of the lot. And the trees that... If we can leave as many trees as possible, I think that will help in absorbing excess water. Third concern was density and don't like the idea of cluster zoning. We're asking for seven lots on 7.85 acres. The layout of the lots is different due to the donation of conservation land, but the density remains the same within my property. We do like cluster zoning because I think it brings the neighbors closer because just proximity in the neighborhood, it's a dead-end street. It would be a dead-end street, and I just like the idea of a neighborhood. Some people say it will be detrimental to the neighborhood. I think there's gonna be changes with either plan. The seven-lot plan will keep the woods and field intact for 90 feet off Highland, the 80-foot setback, and then the 15... Actually, 95 feet, 15 feet from the side eager property. I think that's all the setback. Trees that remain lay in the water retention habitat for hawks, sight and noise barriers toward and from the street. The six-lot plan will mandate more... The removal of more trees for water retention and grading of lots. The driveway will have to be moved 20 feet to the right. Dennis, myself, my daughter and her family all intend to live here, so it makes no sense that we wanna harm the neighborhood. I have four abutters... I have letters from four abutters that have expressed interest in actually purchasing a lot, so I think they have confidence in the plan. Someone said, "There's too much going on in the neighborhood, and we wanna keep large estates." The only other project I'm aware of in the Highland Street neighborhood is 40B on Randolph Ave, and so this is nowhere near a 40B. It's a reconfiguration of lots. We love the idea of large estates, but reality is most become unsustainable for many reasons. You can't mandate that owners keep and maintain large properties they can't afford. The Gamble Estate and the possible use of the special permit in the future. The Gamble Estate is a really large estate. I'm sure there'll be much discussion about it if it ever happens. There is an access to it on the side of my property, between my property and Highland Lane. But there's also access from Fox Hill Lane and Indian Cliffs and that Canton Road extension. So they have other means of egress if and when it becomes developed. I spoke to Julia Blackburn, who cares for the estate, and she assures me there's absolutely no intention to sell at this time. So, you know, this is a... This is a... You know, everyone's thinking of the future, obviously. And if it was developed, certainly there'd be more traffic in that little alley between our houses. But I think that would be mitigated by the other means of egress. So more than half of you are to support this proposal with two others remaining neutral. And the process has been very open. I've listened to the planning board. I've tried to listen to my neighbors. I think that each case is individual, to be decided individually by you. And if this is granted, I think it serves as an example of how to use the special permit thoughtfully. Thank you.
You wanna read these emails?
Okay. Okay, I have them right here. It's an email from Mr. Keith, who lives on Fletcher Steel. His time author and Dennis just checking in to see how everything is progressing. We received a mailing that you are now going for seven lots, which we are very much in favor of. Let me know if I can be helpful as you move closer to a plan.
Can you make sure you submit those for the record? Because those have...
Yes, they're right here.
Hand it out.
I mean, they're stapled.
Four emails. I think it's the last one.
Oh, that was the... Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was going from the front. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
The next one is from... I gotta take a drink of water. Ann and Jack Maharris. Want me to read the whole thing?
To you. It's been submitted to the record. If you wanna highlight something, it's in the record in its entirety.
Okay. Well, you know, they've been longtime neighbors. They had sent a letter previously to support. It says, "Comparing the two plans, we want to restate our support. The very fact that the Burks intend to stay on the property shows their commitment to the area. Why would you stay somewhere less desirable than it is now?" Their plan emphasizing keeping the historical country feel of Highland Street by donating two and a half acres to conservation with special emphasis in the front. Finding a buildable lot in Milton is very difficult. On the plan are four available lots in a desirable area of Milton. Being surrounded by conservation land is only an added bonus. At my house, the area abutting Highland Street has thickly settled established trees, and this is what the Burks currently have and would protect using the plan they favor. The natural landscape of Milton is slowly disappearing, and at least this small section of our street would be preserved. We do not think there'll be any loss of value to us. Having a smaller lot surrounded by protected land does not pose any great problem. Okay? And then Mr. Kingston, who lives across the street. Dear Martha, you're welcome to read this into the record. My name is Paul Kingston. I'm a butter living at 282 Highland Street. And he gives a little personal history. I appreciate the walkthrough last evening, which you explained and pointed out the six versus seven house development. It was very helpful in getting a good sense of the development. I respect the concern of some about cluster zoning, which must be invoked to make the seven. However, in my opinion, the six houses would require a far more radical change in the contours and appearance of the land, giving the need for a new 20-to-30-foot opening to the left of the existing driveway and the 15-foot proximity of the setbacks for the new houses on Highland Street. Indeed, it would remove the existing buffer. Seven-house plan utilizes the existing driveway, albeit it must be widened somewhat. Of special significance to me is that the seven-house plan provides an 80-foot buffer on Highland Street and 60 on Fletcher Steel Lane, which I think it's down to like 55, and a sliding setback on the right side of the property, largest at the front, diminishing as it goes deeper into the property. In my view, while cluster zoning may have some negative aspects in some instances, in this case, it enhances and preserves the unique beauty of Highland Street by providing a substantial buffer and also preserving the integrity of the one existing driveway without adding more. It would be a shame to have concerns about what's to... I'm sorry. What cluster zoning might mean in another case defeat a most positive result in this case, given the specifics of this situation involving, as it does, the addition of only one house, the creation of a substantial buffer, and the preservation of only a single driveway into the property. And then lastly, Maureen and Michael Flanagan said, "We appreciate your invite to look at your property so that we understand the plan. We feel through talking to my dad, who's Paul Kingston, we have a good understanding of what you're proposing to do. The buffer that the cluster zoning will provide is appealing to us."
Thank you. Is there anything else from the applicant this time?
I have one other thing that deals not with the seven lots, but with the discussion about affordable housing. I know that the board discussed a potential formula. The last time, I think our understanding is that it was something like 10% of the value of the lowest value of the lot that sold for the lease offer, assuming $500,000.
You're assuming a $500,000 average lot price in Milton, that's correct.
So at seven lots times 5,000... Uh, 10...
10% of 50,000.
10% of 50,000. So approximately $45,000 to $50,000. That's... That would be acceptable for the Burks to apply that formula.
I think the formula the board came up with was basically 10% of the value of any additional lot allowed by the cluster, which gets you the same conclusion. It's $50,000. So it's... If you get one, you get 50. If you get two, it's 100, and it goes up from there. So you'd be getting one additional lot.
So we're asking for one additional over what's...
That was what we discussed. I don't know that that's... I don't know that we're agreeing to it, but that was what was discussed. Just to confirm that, you know... Well, I think we can address that.
But that would be... That is acceptable to the Burks as an appropriate means of establishing value. And with that, I would open it to the board for questions and then other comments from others who might want to suggest.
Okay, so we will open it up to the board for any comments before I open it up to the public? No? Okay.
Good.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Kelly?
You said the retention tanks would be on either side of the roadway?
For the...
For the seven-lot plan or the six-lot plan?
The newest plan. The newest plan. I thought you said they'd be on either side of the road.
Yes. I'm sorry. We're not proposing to change the drainage characteristics for... From an eight-lot subdivision to a seven-lot.
So this is... So with the latest... This is where you propose they go?
Correct. We're not changing...
Ned, can you grab the mic if you have to?
Can you just point that out? Is it down where they showed us on the sidewalk?
Uh, I don't recall.
I think so.
Well, they might have been the original location of the sidewalk. Right here.
Yeah.
The areas proposed for the drainage for the cluster plan is this? Are the... Yes. Are the same for seven or eight. There is a drainage structure to the left of the driveway in an area where it's somewhat clear, and a drainage structure to the right of the driveway in an area where there's open area and no clearing is necessary.
This... What I'm just confused about is the original six lots, you had the retention tanks here.
Right.
Why can't they be in the same location as this new?
Building a newer and bigger road. That was a subdivision, a proposed subdivision to be done under the town's subdivision control law.
Are you trying to tell me that the road wouldn't fit between here and here?
No, the road gets moved significantly over.
And also moving the tanks.
It's a wider road.
All right. So you maybe tell me the road's down here someplace?
Yes.
And move the tank over here?
No, the engineers' plans have the... Had to move the... Set the... The topography goes from here to here.
Yep.
And so the place to put the tanks is in the front corner.
Like this?
Had to regrade on that. And that is a subdivision plan that we submitted in February and showed the removal of both lines of trees on both sides of the driveway, a regrading and a new driveway, and drainage that goes in on the front right-hand side to retention base.
All I'm trying to get at is, in my mind, whether I build this or this, there's no reason I can't keep the tanks in roughly these locations. These are underground tanks, right? I mean, the grade of the earth only matters so much. Whether I have two feet or three feet or four feet of cover to that tank, I can still put it so that everything drains to it.
Those are answers better left to Jim Burke and Jimmy DeSalle?
No, no. And I'm not trying to get you to change it. I'm just saying it certainly seems to me that it would be an option.
That... It may have been an option. It was an option that was not accepted by Burke and DeSalle when they prepared those plans.
And the reason I say that is be... I thought you said in this cluster development, that was an advantage.
Yes, because it maintains more trees.
But I mean, my point is if you did the original six-house development, you could put it in that location too.
Not with... Apparently, it's a question for Burke and DeSalle.
Okay.
But it is a new roadway that is... That has a different grade.
No, no.
And that grade leads to certain runoff characteristics, certain volumes of runoff.
Yep.
And their plan, which was developed before there was any consideration of the cluster alternative, was that the place the drainage had to go was where they...
The earth naturally, the contour of the earth naturally heads in this direction.
That's right.
No matter whether I do this or this, it naturally heads in that direction. In order to put it here, it's naturally headed in that direction, I would suggest to you that this tank ends up deeper than either one of these tanks, or that tank for that matter. But that's just engineering and construction. So all I'm trying to get at, and I don't want to go back and forth with it, is that I don't see this as an advantage, because if you did this, you could put those tanks on either side of the road as well.
I can't speak for the engineers.
Enough said on that.
All I can say is that that plan was developed before there was any consideration for cluster.
Well, if it's the natural runoff of the land, naturally, that'd be the easiest place to put it. It'd be where you'd go first, responding to.
Anything else before we go to the public? Cheryl, did you have something?
No.
Okay. All right, so anybody here from the public that would like to speak to this application? Gentlemen on the back.
Hi, good evening.
Identify yourself with your name and your address.
My name's John Neary. I live on Highland Lane, on the DePonte Highland Street and Highland Lane. So basically, I live on the other side of the driveway that goes up to 239, 241 Highland Street, other Gambler Estate. I appeared before this board, I believe it was in May, you know, and spoke in favor of the six-lots subdevelopment, and I still am in favor of the six-lot subdevelopment, and I don't think I could support the plan as presented to the board. I walk with Martha, she's a wonderful neighbor, she's really been very, very nice to all the neighbors, and really, I can't say enough good things about Martha, and showing her the plans to us. But my problem is, I live, originally it was just a water problem, and we're talking about the water problem now, putting the drainage tanks, because I had water problems on my house, and I ended up putting a French drain, I don't know if you remember, but I ended up putting a French drain around the outside of the property and around my basement. So that was my main concern when I appeared before the board, and I supported the six-lot subdivision. Looking at the plan, and it didn't catch my eye until, you know, until I got here today, is that if that's a new roadway that goes in, they're going to use the existing driveway as the main road now, because they don't want to, I guess, tear down some of the wall further up the street. But as the planning board, I think you have to look at the driveway that goes up to, I think it's 239, 241 Highland Street, into the Gambler property, which eventually will become a roadway. So you're going to have two roadways within, I don't know, maybe 100 feet, and so that's something I think the board should look at, is the use of the driveway that goes up from Highland Street up to the Gambler property, and the location of the driveway, because that's a bad curve on a Highland Street, and there's been multiple car accidents up there. And the drainage problem with the ice in the wintertime is particular, and I'm sure as they develop the property, it will be taken care of. But it is a concern to me that you're going to have two major roads within 100, I don't know the exact scale of that drawing, you know, but it's not, it's not too far apart. So that's a consideration I think that the board should actually look into. And the other thing I think I want to bring to the board of attention is that whatever this board does on this property, you know, it's got to be, with the gentleman earlier, I think with the Carberry property, said the same thing. My house is facing Highland Street, so when you come up the driveway to 239, 241 Highland Street, you're on my side, where my bedrooms are, so it's really, so my house, most of the houses on Highland Street are more or less faced closer to the street of Highland Lane, where mine is on the corner of Highland Street and Highland. So my bedrooms and my, there's no buffer between, say, that driveway, that 800-foot driveway between the Burke property and my house. So I'm asking the board really consider actually moving that roadway further up Highland Street, number one, for safety, for safety reasons, you know, because you're going to have two major, eventually, as a planning board, you're going to be looking at the Gambler property, and if they use whatever formula, the zoning formula here, you could probably have, I guess, if you put 20 acres, you probably get 16 single-family homes. If you do a cluster zoning, maybe you're going to put another 10 homes, 26 or 30 homes on a cluster zoning up in that property. So you're going to have a lot more traffic eventually coming down beside my property in addition to the Burke property. So those are the issues I think that the planning board should take a look at, is obviously the drainage, you know, and the traffic on that particular curve, you know. I don't know if you have the traffic engineer from the town of Milton to kind of give a quick look at it, I don't know what the standards are for sight, line of sight and all that stuff, but it's something that I think that the planning board, before giving any approval to this design or whatever, or the zoning or whatever, should actually look at that. That's pretty much all I have to say. I mean, I'm in favor of the six lots. I mean, you want continuity between Fletcher Steel, Highland Lane, you know, and whatever that property's going, the street's going to be called. So you want a continuity in the neighborhood. You don't want to, to me, a jigsaw puzzle, that's what it looks like to me, you know, and I don't, you want to maintain the character of the roadway, you want to maintain the character of the neighborhood. So I'd ask that the planning board at least give a little more thought before approving anything, approving this plan or any plan, without looking at at least some of the traffic issues and the drainage issues. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. Sir.
I'm Judith Daryl Kemp. I live directly across the street from the Burks. I'm on the planning commission, but of course, I'm speaking just as myself.
Conservation commission.
I'm sorry, I said conservation.
I was wondering if you...
It's late. Sorry. The conservation commission. So my concerns, I'm speaking as an individual, but these are the values that I hold dear. This is a very special property. I spoke briefly before, I think a couple of you weren't here, about the wildlife in this area, about the size of the trees that are very significant for both the hawks in the neighborhood and for mammals as well. There's Coopas Hawk that is nesting here, there's also a red-tailed hawk that Martha and I actually walked the property, and we could see that nest, it was active, and you hear the Coopas Hawk. The other night, I heard two, I heard two great-horned owls. I don't hear them all the time, so I don't think they're nesting, but they must be using the area, and there were two, clearly. All these animals need tall trees. The Burks' plan to conserve in this would preserve the tall trees. It's terribly significant. It gives a lot of space along Highland Street to conserve these trees, and also in the corner by the alley that people are talking about. If it was the six-house development, which the Burks can do basically as a matter of right, as I understand it, with that, people would be able to take down as many trees as they wanted to in their own property. By doing this cluster, the Burks are voluntarily contributing to the town, contributing to the benefit of all of us, of all of us, because we all benefit from a diversity of wildlife within the town. The last man spoke about the character of the street and how it should be, I forget the term he used, but more homogeneous. I don't see it that way. I think a street should be beautiful, preserved for wildlife, for aesthetics, but in fact, what's great about Milton is our diversity. We have different types of housing stock, and that's what makes it a great town. On Highland Street down the end, you have little houses on little lots, and then there's different ones kind of pegged in. My neighbors next door, the Musgraves, who lived here for years and years, they moved in around 1950, and they talked about, from their house, they could see all the way to Milton Academy when they moved in in 1950. And then after the Second World War, there was infill housing and more and more, like colonials came along, and that's good for the town, you have that diversity. So we want to have a diversity and then maintain. So what are we trying to maintain here? And I get back to a sense of the tall trees, the space that will be permanently open space, and that's, it's a lot of property there. 80 feet setback matters. A little tiny strip doesn't matter for wildlife, but this much of a setback, 80 feet, really Just recently, red squirrels have moved into our neighborhood. I've been there 28 years, it's the second time I've seen them, and now they seem to be living here. They're the other native species of squirrels, and the gray squirrels used to push them out, but I think over on Harland Street, there are red squirrels, and now here, they're not endangered or anything, they're just very rare. They've come back, and I think it's because we have the sort of setting that they need. So in terms of wildlife, it's important, I think, and that's why I'm supporting the cluster development. I think it's also a little bit important that these lots, it's nice to have a couple of smaller lots. It's nice that people maybe can afford to not have everything in big estates, so I think there's a positive aspect to that in terms of planning for the town. The opposition to this, I have to say, it surprised me. I've been on the conservation commission for 12 years, I've seen opposition to things. I think the opposition was founded on a lot of erroneous information. Two of my neighbors, when I spoke to them, said to me, "They're trying to change the zoning, they're going to change the zoning up here." And I said, "They're not changing zoning. This is a type of zoning that we've had in Milton for a long time." And at least one of those neighbors said to me, "Oh, I wouldn't have signed the petition opposing it if I thought, I thought they were changing the zoning." And I said, "No, that was misinformation." So as you evaluate this, I think some of the misinformation that went around was unfortunate. I think people, upon reflection, many people have thought, "This actually is a good idea." People are afraid of change, they weren't really sure what the two options were. So I've tried to explain to people that the Burks have always had a right to develop this property. They have five kids. From the time they moved in, they could have said, you know, "We have all these land, the kids want to have a house here," they could have developed it. And they came before you, and people suggested, "Oh, how about this cluster zoning and keeping some open space? So as you come up Highland Street, you have this open space preserved." So that's what they've been doing. And to me, it's a clear benefit to the town. As you come up Highland Street, you will clearly continue to see lovely row of trees, open space, the houses will be set back, they'll be set on one side, somewhat on the other side, but you'll have a buffer all around you. So from a couple of different perspectives, certainly from conservation, I think the cluster development is a much better plan. It's only one more house, it's only seven as opposed to six, but that one change gives us so much more open space that we wouldn't have otherwise. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application?
Richard Shea, town meeting member, abbot to this property.
I'm sorry, just the address.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, can we get your address for the record, please?
Pardon me?
Just your address for the record, please.
246 Highland Street.
Thank you.
I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 edifices there, and I don't know, it's been said that there are, there are going to be seven. I would like to ask councillor, are each one of these lots going to have a home on it?
Would you just explain the eight, because...
Explain the what?
There are eight houses here, because this was the eight-house plan, and then the green lines are how they sliced it up to make seven.
Just overlaying.
Okay, so...
So the eight houses are not...
Somebody on the board, please tell me, what is a, what is a home? Are you dealing with homes, or you're dealing just with lots?
This is a, we're just creating lots.
Lots.
So it doesn't matter how many homes go on it?
Well, of course, that would be based on zoning, so...
One home per lot.
One home per lot, per our zoning.
One home per lot, okay, and what is a home?
Well, it's one building plus one accessory building, usually at a lot.
With a kitchen.
A building with a kitchen?
Yeah, I think that about does it.
Okay. Building with a kitchen.
It probably needs the facilities, too.
That's a, that's a home.
It can be a home.
Okay. So how many homes are there, councillor?
Well, hold on, one second. We're not, we can't do the interrogation thing, we can't do this back and forth, that's not allowed, but...
Okay, I'll ask you.
Please ask the question, and then we'll answer the questions.
Okay, sure, I'll ask you, how many homes are involved here?
Right now, there are seven lots being proposed.
Right.
The building code will determine what can be built on each lot. So in our zoning, it will tell them how many, what they can build on these lots. They can build anything on these lots as long as they meet the zoning criteria, which would be setbacks, lot coverage, height, you know...
But one of these lots has two buildings.
Accessories.
Right now, we're just talking about the eight lots, that's all we're approving.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me, seven lots as drawn on here. There's a building with, you can have an accessory building.
That's a home?
No.
You can have a building and an accessory building.
It's an accessory building.
But it can't be a home?
No.
That's correct.
No kitchen.
If you have, where he's going is that you could potentially have an antiflag in a barn, so that would be a carriage house. So you...
You could do it.
Carriage house is not a home. You've got seven homes, and you have the potential to put accessory units on those lots, should they fit, should they fit, and then you'd need to have something from the zoning board of appeals to allow...
But that would be any single-family lot in town.
Correct.
There's nothing different about these than any other lot in town.
But that's the question that's being...
So the question that's being asked, the answer to the question that's being asked is that we're creating seven lots, seven buildable lots, that's what we're creating.
Yes.
What can be built on it will be the decision of the inspectional services and the building commissioner.
Okay, so, all right, well, we've informed you how the majority of the abutters feel in prior meetings, if you recall, and also, I think it should be, I think you should weigh everyone's opinion. You were handed some opinion, they spoke at length about Mr. Kingston, and sometimes, in my mind, chips are called, and you people would have to decide on that yourself, whether chips were called or not. Mr. Kingston owned a piece of property, of which councillor was the lawyer for the mall, and the town valued the property at $80,000, and the mall gave Mr. Kingston $650,000 for the lot, which was immediately devalued.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we not, we're not, let's stick to the facts and not allegations.
Well, these are facts, you have, you have something in front of you from Mr. Kingston.
I don't really like the way the allegation is going here.
Right, and don't impugn other people's motives, it's just...
No, I said you would have to decide on your own motive, but you can't decide unless you have facts in front of you.
Okay, we're not going to put, we're not going to put allegations against neighbors.
There's no allegations, they're just facts. Allegations, facts are not allegations.
Okay, well, let's not impugn people's, as Mr. White says, let's, to use his language, let's not impugn people's integrity in front of the board without them here.
I'm not ju...
I think you are imputing their integrity.
The integrity of the board?
Of the, no, of the individual that you're speaking about right now.
Well, I think you should know the facts, and if you want to draw a curtain and not know the facts, then that letter you have in front of you should be equal to everybody else's, about the facts, and that's fine. If that's how you judge it, that's how it's going to be. But you people know how the majority of abutters feel, and you have to make a decision based on the Burks, who are wonderful people, but facts are facts.
You've seen this last...
I haven't seen that, no.
Well, why don't you take a look at it?
Okay, majority of the abutters are against it, reading that.
Okay, I think we've heard your testimony on that. Thank you.
Majority of abutters are against it, including that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to this application? Yes, sir, come forward, please.
Tom Corcoran, I live on 12 Fletcher Steel Way, just, and I also own a lot that abuts, more or less abuts this subdivision at the corner of Fletcher Steel and Highland. And from my perspective, I think the cluster, the six, this seven-lot cluster, as opposed to the conventional subdivision is, I think it's preferable. I think, I think keeping the driveway, the access in its existing location, you know, you'll be able to preserve trees on one side of that... you'll be able to preserve trees on, on one side of the, the new proposed access, as well as the, the buffer that's preserved along Highland Street, Fletcher Steel. I just think it's going to, it'd be, the appearance would be better, be a better finished product, how I feel about it. So, I, and I think this is really exactly what the cluster provision is intended to do, really. I mean, it was put in the, in the bylaw as an option at the board's discretion. And the idea was that it would allow the preservation of open space to, to buffer abutters, preserve open space for the conservation purposes or what, what have you. And in my opinion, the one, the one additional lot is not a big price to pay for the, for the benefits that, that are provided. So, I, I find, and I, and I find the, the seven lot to be an improvement over the eight. The eight, there was a maybe somewhat awkward element to, to one of the homes there and I think removing it is, is a big improvement.
Mr. White, do you have a question?
You have some experience in this sort of development, do you not?
I do.
And you developed Fletcher Steel Drive, as well as numerous other subdivisions. Would it be your opinion that this development, if approved as a cluster, that it would impact adversely values in the neighborhood?
Well, I don't know. I hadn't really thought too much about the value. I would thought, the way I looked at it, is it a better appearing development for the neighborhood? I hadn't really thought about the impact of the, you know, what the homes will sell for compared to what I...
Do you think it would reduce the values in other parts of the neighborhood?
I don't think, no, I don't think it would have a big impact, honestly, on, on, certainly on the neighborhood I'm in. And I don't think in the general area. I mean, you know, people would like to see the place preserved as, as open space. Nobody likes to see change, but the fact is, it's a very developable piece of land. I mean, I think you could probably get four or five Form A lots and have driveways right in a row. And I don't think that's a, a great option. I'd rather see, I'd rather see what they proposed.
Just want to ask a question.
So, and as far as the precedent we're concerned, I, I, I mean, the, the cluster provision is available to, you know, if and when the parcel, the gamble parcel were up for development. I mean, the cluster provision is in the bylaw, it'll be available to them whether this is used here or not. And, and, and just as it is now, it'll be at the board's discretion, whether it's a benefit over a conventional plan. So, I, it doesn't concern me that much. I mean, if the board thought a cluster was better than the gamble property someday in the future, it'll be at their discretion.
I'm going to allow, Mr. Guy has to ask you a question, but don't feel compelled to answer. I don't want this to be an interrogation. You're not an expert witness, but I'm going to ask, I'm going to let her ask a question.
I just want to clarify, because we've heard someone say that the majority of neighbors are abutters, so I want to try and understand where people are abutters or not abutters. So, are you the, Mr. Corcoran here on this, on the, off of Fletcher Steel Way that we see on that?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I, I, just below the, where it says Fletcher Steel Way, where the pointer is right now, I own that piece of land right there. It's a vacant, buildable lot. And I also live at the end of Fletcher Steel Way.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? I have a woman in the back and then you, sir.
So, Caitlin, is she neutral? Is she neutral?
Good evening.
Well, I'm Julia Blackford. I'm the caretaker of Gamble Estate. And I've been there since 2004. It's 12 years. I've worked over all these years with the owner's representative on the maintenance and care of the property. And I have always been told that there are absolutely no plans to develop in any future, near future, far future. The decisions we make about maintenance are based on quote-unquote "long-term," and that's never really been defined and perhaps cannot be. Recently, I took the owner's representative over to Indian Cliff to show them the short little road that's an extension or the right-of-way extension for, I think it's Fox Hill Road over there, because we object to the length of our driveway. It's dangerous coming out on the street. It's very long. It's almost a quarter of a mile long from the big house around the circle and out to the street. So, in talking about any future idea of development, what we looked at and thought about was the sensible solution would be to have a road going over to Indian Cliff and not have our driveway. It's dangerous in the winter. It's expensive to maintain. It's expensive to plow. So, I'm not sure that there could be any decisions or ideas given to a board about future driveway development or any development of that property. But as far as I've been told, over these years, there's nothing in plan.
Thank you very much. Sir, you're up.
I'm Mike Fitzsimons. I live at 214 Highland Ave. And I'm basically a catty corner of this property, like right across the street from the, the, the road track we were just talking about. And I know it's kind of been said before that, you know, the hottest places in hell are reserved for those that remain neutral in times of conflict. And so, I kind of debated what to really say here. And I want to firstly start out with, I think that the concerns of the neighborhoods, neighbors have not been articulated as well as they should be. And the major concern of the neighbors is this concept of precedence and what's it's going, what's it going to do? And there are a lot of surrounding properties right now, and there's a lot of big houses there with a lot of land. You know, yes, we are legitimately concerned about the Gamble Estate. And cluster housing in the Gamble Estate isn't going to add one house. As has been said earlier, it's going to add perhaps another 10 houses or something with 10 families and lots of children and lots of population that will probably egress from multiple different areas. We're concerned about there's some larger, larger homes down the street. And those could be developed under the cluster housing zoning. And cluster housing, from what I understand, doesn't necessarily say you go from an acre of zoning down to a half acre of zoning. From what I understand, you can go from a half acre down to even as low as a quarter acre, which even adds more, which even adds more houses there. So, we're concerned about that. There's even some other houses, homes that can actually add a few more houses in there. So, we are really looking at a very significant change in the overall appearance of a neighborhood. And a neighborhood that in many ways, people feel is already under assault with a large population development not very far down the road, in which as many of 96 individual residences may go in there. So, I think the concerns of the neighbors are actually fairly, very legitimate. Now, having said that, the Burks have been very wonderful neighbors. And in isolation, I really like the idea of preserving this vista, this space. And I think that Martha and Dennis and the rest of their family is being very honest in the fact that they want to maintain the characteristic of the neighbors, of the neighborhood itself. And if this was just brought to us as, as the present, as the development appears right now, I think that we could certainly accept that. But I think the, I think the board does need to, you know, needs to consider that the neighbors, all of us, have very legitimate, you know, concerns. But my wife and I personally do feel that the development that the Burks are, you know, are proposing does maintain a lot of the character that we actually appreciate regarding the view, regarding the, the view from the street. And again, I also want to say, too, we do appreciate a lot of the work that Dr. Shea, Mr. Mullen, and others in that neighborhood have really, have really done to try and preserve the characteristics of this neighborhood for, for multiple years. And, you know, this, you know, this is not, this is certainly not easy on, easy on anybody. So, thank you.
Right. Just to clarify something and maybe Alex, you can pipe in where I step on my own toes here, but I don't think, when it says you go down to a 10,000-square-foot buildable lot, that that adds homes. They're just saying you can cluster it to a 10,000-square-foot lot. In other words, example I used earlier, if it's Zone A and you need an acre, 40,000 square feet, you know, builders acre, whatever you want to call it, if you have 10 acres, you could build 10 homes. If you cluster it, you can put them each on 10,000, but you can still only build 10 homes.
Well, the cluster, the cluster, you have a measurement. And the cluster is for use on parcels of 10 acres. And the Burks, you can do it on a parcel of 5 acres if it's a definitely superior design as determined by the Planning Board. But if you need at least 5 acres, and then if you, you know, you can do it as a right on 10 acres or propose it as a right on 10 acres. And rather than using 40,000 square feet of area as a, as what your standard lot would be, you can go down somewhat because the cluster does give you a small bonus. But it's, it's not a huge bonus and it does require affordable housing or a contribution in lieu thereof.
But it can go down as low as 10,000 square feet, of which it could be a buildable property.
Well, the lot, the house can...
You can build a pile of 10,000-square-foot homes, it just means you can cluster them and build them 10,000 square.
Surrounded by open land.
Because you got to live, leave the rest of the land...
But it can still go down to 10,000 acre properties.
Yes, but it doesn't, but it doesn't elevate the number of...
You can have a Brookline-sized lot in Milton, in fact.
But you correct me if I'm wrong, if it's Zone A and you get 40 acres, it doesn't mean you can get many more than 40 houses.
Actually, in the Residency District, you can have it on 7,500 square feet of, that's the standard-sized lot in the Town C District.
But you still need 5 or 10 acres or more.
No, you don't. This is a...
No, that's, he's talking about, you're talking about here.
Standard zoning.
Oh, standard zoning, okay.
7,500 square feet of area.
You follow what I'm saying. It doesn't mean you can take 10 acres and cut it into 10,000-square-foot lots.
Oh, no, I know. I, I, I'm definitely following. If we're arguing for cluster housing, it's not working.
I'm not arguing for it. I'm just trying to understand it, our best we can, together.
There's a definite cap on how many lots that you can have. And actually, the smaller the lots are, the more open space there potentially could be. So, on this particular property, this is seven acres?
Seven point eight. Almost eight.
So, I mean, the maximum number, you couldn't just divide that by 10,000 and get that number of lots?
Right, but I also think, one of the points you're making here very clearly, though, is that cluster housing does potentially risk smaller lots in an area, too. And smaller lots is definitely against the character of this particular neighborhood that we have. And that is a concern of the neighbors.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name's Virginia Corcoran. My husband and I live at 36 Highland Lane. We're direct abutter. And we, my husband also owns 24 Highland Lane, and he is a builder as well in related to Tom Corcoran, who's just spoke and did Fletcher Steel Homes. And we are completely in agreeance with this cluster zoning. And Martha's plan has been extremely thoughtful and considerate of the neighbors. She spent more time than probably any builder would have spent with the neighborhood in making people feel comfortable. And I'm looking forward to her daughter, Jackie, who babysat for my children, to move into the neighborhood and enjoy the special place that it is. Maintaining the country environment of the setback is extremely important. And we back up to the alleyway going to the Chase Estate. And I have for 28 years walked back to Martha's back door to see what was going on. And it's just, just a special place there, all the pine trees and the wildlife, and it's quiet and peaceful. And I think that this will just be, really enhance the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this application?
I'm Gene Irwin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. I live at 120 Highland Street. I've heard the testimony of everyone here before me tonight, and I'm also in the real estate business. I personally believe that these homes in this cluster division, I would like to ask an, a question of the applicant. Mrs. Burke said these houses were going to cost 1.4 million to build. And I'm wondering if she meant 1.4 million at sale. Could we clarify that?
Sure.
Sure. The lot goes for about 500,000. Building costs are about 300,000 a square foot, so a 3,000-square-foot house will cost 900,000 to build. So, it's 1.4.
The all-in cost is 1.4 million is the, is what you say.
So, the asking price would be about 1.4 million, not the cost to build the house would be 1.4 million?
The all-in basis of the house she's suggesting is 1.4 million.
So, now, I personally think the, a, a sale price of 1.4 is conceivable. I think it's probably a little bit less, but it's conceivable there based on the seven house subdivision. On the eight, I think it gets a little cramped and I think the price drops. If you compare prices over on Clifton Road, and there's plenty of them on half-acre lots over there, and even John Neary's house, I think you might see valuations mostly under a million. I think John Neary's would go over a million potentially. But I think when you go to Fletcher Steel, that runs right next door to this, you find that there's a property two doors in on the right-hand side of Fletcher Steel. I think it's on the market for 2.9 million. Now, you ask anyone who lives in a 2.9 million if having, you know, 2 point, or 1.2 million houses around them devalues their property, most of them certainly do. And that would be my opinion also. I was also told, I got a lot of the signatures from many of the neighbors in the neighborhood. And a lot of them, there was a trust issue on this whole thing to begin with. A lot of people didn't trust the Burks engineers, quite frankly. And it goes all the way back to the mall that was in Milton. Furthermore, a lot of people don't trust the Burks' legal counsel. And the other people had...
Can I just, one second, the people don't, can I, we just ask the speaker to speak for himself?
You have no personalities, Gene.
Okay, yeah, I was trying not to mention names, but just give the general...
No, I mean, speak for yourself rather than speaking for your neighbors.
Okay.
That's all.
Other people are saying that there's actually two residences on that property right now and only one is paying taxes. People are saying the barn is occupied.
So, I'm going to ask them, can we just stick to the facts on the seven lot subdivision, please?
Well, let's say, you know...
Because the seven lot subdivision...
They're going to build it, there has to be trust if they want support of the neighborhood. And that trust does not exist based on what I just told you. Okay?
Okay.
We don't have any letters that support what you said, so can you speak for yourself, Mr. Irwin?
I am speaking for myself. You can look up the public record on Clifton Road and what the property values are on 20,000 square foot lots.
No, the, the opinion about what the neighbors' concerns are. I think what we're asking is for you to express what your concerns are.
Well, I think the neighbors can all read newspapers, and I think most people in this room are ladies, gentlemen, and some are, you know, witnesses, some are co-conspirators potentially. I'm just talking real. We all live in this small town. Most of us know what's going on. And there's a problem that pertains to this Planning Board and other developments all over town.
Okay, we have a seven lot subdivision in front of us.
Yes, we do.
Please speak to the facts. Please do not suggest there are problems with the Planning Board and be challenging because I believe you're in challenging. You're not specific, specifying names, but you're suggesting there are issues of trust with this Planning Board. Unless you want to state specific facts, let's stick to the facts of this application.
I don't think it's material. I think that if you want to talk about this subdivision, this, this cluster development, you should discuss the cluster development.
I agree.
Well, I can, I mean, you can look at Dr. Shea's house...
And not, you know, not talk about, "I don't trust this, I don't trust that."
That's really the place for citizen speak or the editorial section.
Well, if, if you look behind you at, say, Dr. Shea's house, for instance, using the same formula, you know, 20,000-square-foot lots, a guy like Dr. Shea with some fudging of the engineering could have like three or four houses on his lot. That would definitely bring down the values of his neighbors' properties. And if all the other neighbors did the same thing, it would...
Is he of 5 acres?
No, he is 2 acres, but a 20,000...
Then he can't do what you're suggesting.
But a 20,000...
Then he can't do what you're suggesting, Mr. Irwin.
I know it, but...
Then why are you saying it?
The visualization of, you, right now, you have an open field there and you're going to put six houses in it.
They have a right to put six houses on the field.
They have a right to put six houses on the entire property.
Correct. Correct.
But now you're talking six houses just in the open field out in front. And that is definitely going to affect other property values in the neighborhood. And to me, just like Fletcher Steel, Fletcher Steel would not be fetching $3 million per house, potentially upper twos, if the houses, if the lots were smaller and the houses were smaller. You wouldn't be getting that kind of valuation. It's just like, you know, you had the Ford Van Trood potential development there with the Hamilton property. He wanted to do three houses on 15 acres. Those houses probably would have gone for $3 million bucks apiece all day long. Now they're talking 10 houses there. And you're looking at maybe, again, billion two, something like that for brand new houses. But there's no comparison, a house on two or three acres is, is not comparable market value-wise to these houses on 20,000 square feet. I rest my case.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application?
My name is Laura Cahill. I'm a real estate agent here in Milton. And I cannot accept what Gene Irwin has presented to you. I don't think that there is any issue with the owners of this, doing their development and selling it for a market rate prices. And this is something that I do all day long, seven days a week. And easily, houses would sell for one, two there. Anybody?
Just a question, and do you agree or disagree with him that the value of the properties around it would go down if this were developed?
Of course not, of course not. That's nonsense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else, sorry? Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody?
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Corcoran.
So, I don't know whether the board is ready to, whether it wants to take a little bit of time under advisement or it's ready to consider whether or not a seven lot cluster is acceptable? Because we're at a point where we need to know where the board stands before we spend more money on one set of plans or another. And so we would ask the board whether you do it tonight or whether you do it two weeks from now, a formal vote on its willingness to support the seven lot cluster. If the board can't get there, then the Burks need to know before they spend another dime.
So I'm not sure we need a formal, I'm not sure we, or we can ask if anybody's interested in doing a formal vote. I certainly think we can do an informal poll and let people speak to where they are on the current application if they wish. And certainly, we can't make any commitments, we don't have a final plan in front of us.
Understood.
But we can certainly speak to the tone of the application if, if members so, so wish. So I'd offer the, the board the opportunity just to... Mr. Whiteside, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I wrote the cluster bylaw. And I wrote both of them. I wrote the first one and then it didn't get used, so I, I modified it. And of course, the board had a lot of input, but I, I did write it. And I'm quite fond of the cluster bylaw. And I think that you've come up with a good plan. And, and a plan that really works. And I've, you know, I, Paul Kingston is a friend of mine and I trust his judgment. And I think that he's, you know, he's right. He seems to be right. And I don't think that, I don't think that this will do anything but enhance values in your neighborhood. And I think that the people who live there are going to be real happy with the red-tailed hawks. So I'm, I, I think that this application should go forward. And if you engineer it right, I anticipate that I'll support it. And I anticipate that I will vote to put $50,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Gaius?
I would say I agree with Alex. I, I do want to, I think I said this when we talked about this before, I think this proposal does what the cluster bylaw sets out to do, which is to make a, a better development on a property that can be developed. And as I said before, the fact that somebody could come along and put, do an A and R here, which is approval not required subdivision, and put four lots with four new driveways access off of Highland Street. And to me, that would radically change the character of this part of Highland Street in a very negative way. And it would also have an impact on traffic because now you have four driveways, well, actually five driveways coming out instead of being able to queue up in one new road. So I do think that the, that it's a superior site plan. And I also just want to make a comment about the support and the list of abutters and checking and looking at the list of direct abutters. And I see that there's a mix, you know, of support and some concern and some neutral. So I wouldn't characterize it at the, at the majority of the abutters are opposed to it. I think it's a real mix and with a slight of the immediate abutters and slightly more support it than don't support it. So I, I think that with careful site planning review, careful review of which trees are going to be preserved and which have to go to make way for the wider roadway and for the drainage, I think this, this plan can be quite a good plan, just like Alex suggested. So I would support going forward with further planning on seven lot cluster development.
So can you, to me, this is one or two options. We're either going to do a traditional subdivision or we're going to do the cluster. So something's going here. But, and I also feel as though, while I've been a real stickler on the affordable housing payment, because I think we have to be thoughtful when we're applying that provision, I also really consider this a neighborhood issue. And so when we first got the first petition, I was very moved by that because I thought there was a lot of opposition. Now we've seen a number of emails and letters from people that say they're no longer opposed with new information or better understanding. Can you show us? We know who the direct abutters are, but can you show us where some of these other people live so we can just have an understanding? We have some folks on the no, and we have some folks on the yes. So the yes folks that are not identified here would be the Maharris. I'm just wondering the proximity of, of these folks.
This is Mr. Neary. And then the Maharris's live right across from him on Highland Lane.
Jelani? I'm not sure.
Jelani lives right next to the Maharris's.
And Frank Corcoran?
He owns a house here and a house here.
And John Keith?
He is right here.
And then can you show us where Adamson is on the no?
On the other corner of the top of Clifton.
And Mike Fitzsimons?
This corner on.
And Lombardi?
Next to Mr. Kingston down here.
And Anderson?
He's after this empty lot.
I mean, I personally walked the site, I thought the, I thought the cluster was a superior design. I thought it kept more, it was more consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I thought it did a lot for preserving the view from the street and preserving the impact on the, or mitigating any potential impact on abutters. I expected to come to this meeting tonight, just prepare myself mentally and say I was in support of the subdivision because that's what I thought the neighborhood wanted. Now, I don't think that's necessarily true. I think it's a split, so I, I have to say I would be leaning towards the cluster because I do think it's a, it's a superior design.
I'm, I'm just, I don't know if I can say to myself that it's a demonstrably superior design, visual appearance and use of the subdivision. I don't know if I could say that now. And some of the reason that I say I don't know if I can say it is because it seems to me that sometimes when I hear why it's better, it doesn't hold fact. With all due respect to what you said, Gerald, I don't know if you could fit four houses across the front of there and then maintain a road to go back to the other houses. I, I don't know that that's close to a fact. I'm not sure about that. So when people, sometimes when Mr. Corcoran gives reasoning about the retention tanks being on the side of the road, being a superior thing, it probably is a superior thing, but I don't know why you can't do that anyway.
I asked Mr. Clark if four would fit across there, and he told me they would, and an A and R.
I took the existing role plan for that parcel, put the four A and Rs across, put the 50-foot road in there for the cul-de-sac that if they wanted to do something with the two lots in the back in the future.
When I get home to.
But I mean, an A and R isn't even on the table, so I don't know why that is necessarily relevant to this. See, they're, they're going to pursue a subdivision.
You have the potential to put in four lots right now.
It may become, it may become the alternative because it may be less expensive to simply do an A and R than to pursue.
Well, that's important to know. I didn't realize that was.
It may become, but, you know, when sometimes when you're on the other side of the coin, you point out that nobody's going to do that because people aren't going to pay for houses like that with lots, with driveways right next to them, right next to them, right next to them.
That's the way the abutters are across the street, though, Mike.
No, they're not as tight as the four houses across here, nowhere's near.
These two are.
Nope, nope. But again, I just, sometimes the people that bring things forward get me twitches between because they bring up reasons that, like I say, just don't seem to hold a lot of fact. So I'm on the fence.
What about the tree buffer?
I don't, I don't, you know, you, you get into a lot of discussion here. These, these lots are enormous. I don't understand why you can't take, here's your six lot, take these four lots, just push them back and you'd have all kind of buffer. Why I'd want to pay 1.4 million dollars for a lot here and a lot here and clear-cut it to Highland Street is beyond me. I wouldn't. I'm sure those people will do anything, but I wouldn't. I mean, it seems to me every time I hear somebody buy a house, one of the grandest things they say is, "Look at the, look at the land I've got here." In the, you know, the buffer I've got to my neighborhood, I don't have to, I don't have to look at my neighbor, I don't have to look at the street. But, you know, anything's possible. But I, and that gets back to, is it demonstrably, I don't use that word too often, superior.
I don't know if any of us do.
But that's the wording in the bylaw, right? It's, to be, to cut to the chase, it would seem to me that the reason you want to put seven here instead of six is because it's more profitable. And if somebody came to me and said that to me, I could reason things better than trying to say, no, it's, it's, it's just better. It's, it's, we're doing it, we're doing it for the good of mankind.
See, I think that I'm the most moved by that buffer.
You, you could, like I said before, you could put six houses here, put a buffer out there.
I don't know if you can.
You'd probably still get your six houses fine. You'd have, you might even get 40,000 square foot lots and still put a buffer out there. If that's your goal. But if your goal is to make, you know, a lot of more money, that's another. I guess.
I just want to make a comment in response to what Mike said about profit being the motive. They came in to us with a subdivision idea. And when Emily was on the board, she and I both encouraged them to look at the cluster bylaw because we thought it would be a much better site plan. That's why they went, in my understanding, and they've said this, that's why they went to look at clusters. So let's, let's be clear about that.
And I, again, I just wish people came back that way. They could say that.
I think they've been clear about that all along.
It's, it's to our own advantage and the board suggested it.
Mike, I made that abundantly clear at the start of this hearing, that we are only here because the board suggested it.
Oh, I'm, I understand that and I understand it now, but I'm saying.
And we agree that it's a better plan.
We could lay all the cards on the table. We could say it's a better plan and we're going to, we're going to do better by it as well financially.
They may.
It's pretty even. I've done analysis, it's pretty even. In fact, I kept saying, if there's many more cost to this, it won't be worth it. It's that even.
So ultimately.
And then that, that confuses me, think, why not just put six, six lots in there?
Because the other plan I prefer, it's, I think it's so much better for the neighborhood.
Put a buffer there, put a buffer there and put six houses.
It wouldn't fit.
I, I don't understand that.
You have a significant diminution of value on the large house in the back. If you shrink that lot, part of the, part of the preservation here is the real value in the rear with that house. It needs its own large lot. The lot with the barn needs its own large lot. You're left with a certain amount of land left. You need to, you, you can only extend the length of the, of the subdivision road so far. Each lot needs 40,000 square feet of frontage. You can only do so much.
You, you see, you were answering some of the questions I'd like to see come forward in, in the, in the regular dealings here. You're telling me something right off. It's not that you can't get six lots in there, give a buffer, it's you don't want to shrink the back lots.
No, there's, there's two points to that, Mike. One is that you can only, you have to have 150 feet of frontage. You can only do that subdivision plan. Each of those lots just gets 150 feet of frontage.
You could ask for a variance on that.
No, we can't.
Why not?
Because there's no hardship.
So I guess I get to go last. So first of all, you know, to address a lot of what you were just saying, Mike, you know, this is still, we still have the principle of private land ownership. So if people want to come forward with a plan and propose it to the board and it's allowed within our zoning, I think we owe them the, the consideration to do it. They, they've coming forward to a, with a plan that's, that's allowed under our zoning bylaw, so we, we have to consider it. And I think to their point, the board encouraged them to do so. So we're considering it. I've been, I've candidly been very surprised by the opposition to this plan. I, I understood the opposition to the eight-house plan. But I've never understood the opposition to the buffer and the smaller lots when you get such a significant buffer around the site. I think this is a demonstrably better plan. I, I can feel like I use that language. You're preserving a historic vista along a historic roadway. You're preserving a stone wall, I believe, which this board has spent a lot of time talking about stone walls on other applications and how it's not a great thing to interfere with them, which we would have to do on the other application. But for me, I mean, it really comes down to the buffer. It's a, you're talking about 80 feet of preserved vegetated area along Highland Street, which is really going to enhance the view from the street and protect the view of these new homes. On typical subdivision applications that we've seen, I've gone out and looked at the product, they're lovely homes, but in many cases, you've got 15 or 20 feet away from a roadway, you've got one house, a wide street, and another house with nothing on the side other than a sidewalk and lawn and maybe a small dogwood tree. I just believe that this is a far better, demonstrably, demonstrably better application from an aesthetic. And if they're picking up an extra lot, I, you know, more, more power to them because I believe it's a, I think it's a better plan. I also believe that the contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust is a significant benefit to the town. The town meeting in approving the bylaw for cluster zoning made it very clear, in my opinion, with their vote and with the amount of discussion that was on the floor of town meeting, that getting contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust as part of this cluster bylaw was very important. This goes, this, this will increase, I believe, by 10 times the amount of money that's currently in our Affordable Housing Trust fund.
Which is sad.
So I believe, that, that is sad, but it also is, it's, it's true. I believe the formula is fair. I believe this is a demonstrably better plan. So that's where I'm at.
Can I just make one more? There was, we've heard a couple of times the issue of concern about setting a precedent with this project and what this means to the neighborhood on surrounding parcels. Can somebody speak to that? Because I think there's a misunderstanding about the fact that folks in this neighborhood, if you have a five acre parcel or a 10 or a 20 acre parcel, you can use a cluster today. It doesn't matter what's here. And it doesn't have any bearing whatsoever on what any other parcel around you does. But I'm wondering if.
I think you just spoke to it.
Yeah, you did.
Because I, I hear that concern and I know it's a valid one. And I know there's been a lot of pressure, in particular in this neighborhood with a variety of other proposals in the direct vicinity. But I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this, that the Gamble Estate could have a cluster tomorrow filed without anybody, I mean, I know somebody was here representing them tonight saying that that's not what their plans are, but who knows? Tomorrow, we could get one in our mailbox. And we can't think about, well, what if something happens on the Burke property? Should we decline this cluster because the Burke property might try to do a cluster? And what does that mean altogether? We can't, we can't do it that way because we can only consider the application that we have before us. And that's within the private property owner's rights to do the cluster with or without anybody else in the neighborhood doing it. So I just, I think it's important for people to understand that because I think there's a real strong misunderstanding about that very point.
I think someone said, one of the test, one of the abutters said there was a misconception that we were changing zoning. This is an application under existing zoning for a special permit for a cluster development. So that's where we're at. permit for a cluster development. So, that's where we're at.
But just to that point, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, but also, in listening to the previous meeting tape today, I think I heard that the cluster zoning's been used once before.
That's a source, yeah.
Where was that, Alex? I think you're the one that said it.
Let me think.
But it-
Did I say that?
You've said it's never been used.
Something was proposed, but never permitted, I think.
That's true. I did hear, you're right. It was proposed, but it wasn't used, right?
They did a terrible plan down on Randolph Avenue and Hillside Street.
Yes.
It was terrible.
But my point is, I don't disagree at all with your saying, but you gotta keep in mind, sometimes when you do break the ice, you break the ice.
Yeah.
So, you know-
No, I get it, but-
If somebody had the identical lot next door, you'd have a hard time saying, "Well, you can't." You'd have a hard time for the reasons, because it's like-
I totally get that, but I don't think it's us that's breaking the ice. I think town meeting did in 2014.
We also don't get to reject an application because it breaks the ice. We have to reject an application on merits.
I said I agreed. I'm just saying-
Just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
There's a human element here. There's always a human element that people don't wanna necessarily talk to.
Maybe if there were an identical lot next door, another cluster would be perfect.
Maybe it would.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak to this application? Ma'am, sorry, we had a hand raised, Mr. Clarkren.
I wasn't going to speak to this. I wanted you to please read this into the record. I believe all of you received an email regarding the right formula, or reasonable formula for determining it. And I thought it was gonna come up in discussion, but it sounds like you're all agreeing that 10% of one lot is a fair amount, whereas the Cluster Zoning Bylaw says it's 10% of the entire lot that should be contributed.
Yeah, the Cluster Bylaw says that if you're developing 10 lots, you have to give a lot.
Right.
And then beyond that, it's really-
Which is 10% of the entire development.
Right. Beyond that, below that, it's really at the board's discretion.
Right, right. So, there isn't much of a discussion about you're giving 1/100 of it. So, if you could read that, so the public can understand the issue, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I think that this is not material at this time, but when we get to the, maybe, I mean, I don't know. Are we gonna have a discussion about this?
Well, I think we, I don't wanna prolong things, but again, I thought in previous meetings, Mr. Clark said that could be a hinge point on whether they go forward or not.
Absolutely.
So, to say it's not worth discussing, I don't think it's true.
So I'm gonna ask our lovely planning assistant to read that into the record for me.
This is the letter we received from Mr. Irwin.
And this letter was submitted by mail, email to the board, and we all received it yesterday, or the day before. I can't remember, so-
Jean, this is your letter?
Yes.
Is this okay?
Yes.
So this is Mr. Irwin, who spoke before. Dear Planning Board members, I am writing to propose methods for calculating a reasonable monetary contribution determination to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a cluster development applicant. Applicant will be the reference. Preferring to make a monetary contribution in lieu of providing an additional building lot to be used for the subsidized housing inventory. In developing formulas, I sought a variety of experts, including legal, accounting, and real estate, to consider Section J, Paragraph 6 of the Cluster Development Bylaw. Section J 6 speaks directly to a cluster development containing less than 10 building lots, as well as 10 or more building lots. 10% of the lots, i.e. one lot, if there are 10 lots, shall be restricted so as to count in the SHI in cluster development applications with 10 or more building lots, while the bylaw provides an additional option for applications with 10 or fewer lots to make a, quote, "monetary contribution which is reasonable as determined by the planning board under relevant circumstances," end quote. If an applicant plans to sell 10 lots or more, with each lot, for example, valued at $500,000 for a total sales price of $5 million, then the applicant has to allow one lot to be restricted so as to count on the subsidized housing inventory. Essentially, the applicant contributes $500,000, or the value of one lot, to be counted on the SHI, or 10% of the total $5 million sales prices of the cluster development. Section J 6 provides that when fewer than 10 lots are proposed in a cluster development, then the applicant can either provide for an additional lot to be used for a single-family dwelling with restrictions, so as to be counted on the subsidized housing inventory, or the applicant may provide for a monetary contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Trust in an amount which the planning board determines is reasonable. Incorporated into developing the proposed methodologies for calculating reasonable monetary contribution determinations are an average of recent real estate sales and current real estate values in the town of Milton. $500,000 is a conservative minimum for a one-acre and smaller, buildable house lot in an approved subdivision in the town of Milton. Also incorporated into developing methodologies are the legal definitions of the words "reason," "reasonable," "reasonable cost," "reasonable price," and "fair and reasonable market value," as defined by Black's Law Dictionary, and there's an attachment. Methodologies for consideration. Formula A, in the case of the cluster development proposal for 245 Highland Street, the applicant desires to develop seven building lots under the Cluster Development Bylaw, and is proposing to make a monetary contribution in lieu of providing for an additional eighth building lot to be used on the subsidized housing inventory. If each of the seven lots are sold, for example, for $500,000, then the total sales price for the seven lots will be $3.5 million. A reasonable contribution amount, therefore, could be determined to be 10% of the total $3.5 million sales price, or $350,000. Alternatively, Formula B, another formula could provide that, since only seven lots and not 10 lots are being proposed by the applicant, then the planning board can determine that only 7/10 of the price of each lot, 7/10 times $500,000, or $350,000, would be the appropriate monetary contribution to be made. This formula would result in the same contribution amount of $350,000 to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Overarching the matter of calculating a monetary contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, quote, "in an amount which is reasonable as determined by the planning board under the relevant circumstances," end quote, is the intent of town meeting in approving this zoning bylaw. It is indisputable that the intention of town meeting was to preserve as much open land as possible, while providing for affordable housing production under state law, and to provide a monetary contribution option in lieu of providing land. The intent of the Cluster Development Zoning Bylaw is discussed in the town's recently updated master plan and the state-approved housing production plan. The intent of town meeting was never to circumvent the town's zoning code for the purpose of increasing profit at the expense of a abutters and neighborhood's long-existing zoning. The two suggested calculation formulas are in accordance with the spirit and terms of the Cluster Development Bylaw. The applicant proposed a contribution amount of $50,000 at the most recent planning board hearing on the cluster development application concerning 245 Highland Street. Said $50,000 amount is only 10% of the fair and reasonable market value of one lot, rather than 10% of the value of the entire cluster development. The Cluster Development Bylaw at no time proposes that only 10% of one lot be contributed to the subsidized housing inventory, but rather that 10% of each 10-lot cluster development, or one entire lot, be added to the subsidized housing inventory. In either case, both Formula A and B produce a reasonable contribution determination that is developed within the purpose of the bylaw, the intention of town meeting, the legal definitions of bylaw terms, and the very conservative, current, fair, and reasonable market value of buildable lots of varying size within the town of Milton. With the majority of abutters and neighbors, I remain opposed to a cluster development at 245 Highland Street, but support subdivision within the existing zoning. Thank you sincerely, Eugene Irwin.
Does anyone wish to comment? Or change what we, I think, where we were on affordable housing last time?
I just wanna make, I will make a comment. The six-lot subdivision would get no contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust, and the intent of the Cluster Bylaw is not purely to address affordable housing. It's one of the components. There's significant benefit coming from three acres of protected, open space. So I think what, when we're looking at less than 10 lots, we're looking at some reasonable incentive to do a cluster development. We're not trying, I think one of the reasons there was never an application, or maybe one that didn't go forward under the prior Cluster Zoning Bylaw, was that there really was no incentive to use it. And if there's good reasons to have it on the books, then people will use it. So, I think, I'm concerned that if you make the number too high, that there, it will be a deterrent to using the Cluster Bylaw here, and I think that would be a shame. So I would like to stick with the figure that has been suggested in the past.
I actually agree. The, looking for a formula, I've always said is, is going after a whirl of the wisp. What we're supposed to do, in my view, is determine what's reasonable under the particular circumstances, and I think that under these particular circumstances, however you get there, that $50,000 seems reasonable. And if you look at the purpose of the cluster development, which is in J 1B, this subsection relating to cluster development is intended to permit development on large tracts of land in the manner which preserves open space and topography, wooded areas, and natural features of substantial portions of those tracts. And, two, to provide a process requiring careful site planning and high-quality design, resulting in developments in harmony with the surrounding open spaces, which enhance the neighborhoods in which they occur and the town as a whole. And you notice that the purpose doesn't mention affordable housing. We, there is a provision for affordable housing, but it is a provision that says the board has to determine, under the circumstances of each case, what's reasonable. And in this case, I think if we said $350,000, that definitely would not be reasonable. It would kill the application and deter future applications under this bylaw, which I think deserves some use in this town. So, that's my view.
Was the interpretation in that letter incorrect? Was the intent written in the bylaw to be 10% of the entire project? In the reason-
It doesn't say. There's nothing that talks about how much the contribution should be. It's supposed to be an amount that's reasonable, determined by, and, you know, they say that an affordable lot is worth $500,000. It's just not true, because an affordable lot with a house on it can only be sold for $172,000, and if you remove the house, what's the lot going to be worth? And I suggest it's not going to shoot up to $500,000. It's going to be under 100. I think 50, 50 makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I'm on board with the 50. Okay, so I think we'll leave you with that. Would you like us to continue the hearing?
Yes, and I would suggest that we continue until October 28th.
Unless that meeting gets rescheduled, but yes.
27th. The reason A, Lisa-
Eggleston.
Eggleston's gonna need time now to do the stone order management. We'll need time to develop, to refine the plan, to get it back to you in time for that hearing.
I believe you'll be the first hearing that night at 7:15? Okay. So, can we have a motion to continue to 7:15 on October 28th, please?
27th.
28, excuse me. Motion to continue to October 27th at 7:15, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now gonna have a discussion on 1672 Canton Avenue, Carberry Estate.
Shall we continue the, did we continue that, all right, the, the, I guess we did? Did we? I don't remember. It was so long ago.
Did we vote? We did. Did we continue it to a particular date?
Yes.
I didn't make a note. The 13th.
7:30.
The 13th at 7:30. Okay, thanks. October 15th.
On a lighter note, I will let everyone know it's halftime in the Patriots game. They're up 10 to nothing.
Oh.
And Houston hasn't crossed the midfield and gotten into Patriots' territory yet tonight.
Wow.
I'm supposed to get elicited at least a smile.
Have they completed a pass, is the question.
Not many.
Did Roykowski play? Is he in there?
He's in there.
Nice.
Sorry, I've been reading the Twitter feed during that exciting hearing.
Considering how nice it would be on a bigger screen.
Could you arrange that?
I'll do the people's business first. I assume you've been recognized for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ned Clarkren, with Jack Dolly, who was the principal of Northland Residential. We were here before you sometime this spring with some preliminary plans, overviews of Northland's proposal, beginning proposal for the redevelopment of the Carberry property on Canton Avenue in Milton. There has been a significant amount of work done, both in terms of understanding the site, and in meetings and conversations with various neighbors and abutters, and we thought we would present to you where we have netted out to date, begin to ask for the planning board's comments and concerns as we go forward to further refine the plans if we can, and begin to work with the idea that we would work towards presentation of a zoning bylaw to town meeting, if there's a special town meeting this winter. There are, in that regard, four to six opportunities remaining to work with the planning board. We think it's time. We've done a lot of work with neighbors. We think we have built a fairly good consensus with many of the neighbors. There are some that continue to have concerns, and I know that you've heard from one in particular, who has declared war. But we did have, contrary to what you may have heard earlier tonight, we've had, we had one meeting with him, we've had telephone conversations with him in council, and unfortunately, we're miles apart in terms of his idea of what we should pay him in terms of value of impact and otherwise. So, with that, we've got a brief set of overview. Since the spring, we have completed an on-the-ground survey of the property, an existing conditions survey of the property. It is 47 acres, 1,600 feet of frontage on Canton Avenue. We have refined the plan from original scope of 75 units with eight affordable units at 10%. Drop to 64 units with six affordables, done in part with agreement from some of the abutters that that was the right number to arrive at, and we have developed a more significant sort of plan. We've also done is develop a plan under the Cluster Bylaw, which has been pushed on us by some abutters, and we can, and you'll see that we have a comparison of a 33-lot clustered subdivision, as opposed to a 64-unit townhouse development with 50% of open space, as opposed to 35% open space, et cetera. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jack Dolly to, through the presentation, and then open it up to the board for questions, comments, issues, concerns, as appropriate.
Thank you, Ned. Given the hour, being ten minutes of 10, and I'll try to be quick. We were before you last on April 11th, and we met with the, our first neighborhood meeting was on March 30th, and prior to March 30th, there were a series of small group meetings with members of the planning board, specific residents in the neighborhood, Mr. Walker being one of them, Halon Tucker-Smith.
to a 64-unit townhouse development with 50% of open space as opposed to 35% open space, et cetera. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jack Dolly through the presentation and then open it up to the board for questions, comments, issues, concerns, as appropriate.
Thank you, Ned. Given the hour, being ten minutes of 10, and I'll try to be quick. We were before you last on April 11th. And we met with the... First neighborhood meeting was on March 30th. And prior to March 30th, there were a series of small group meetings with members of the planning board, specific residents in the neighborhood, Mr. Walker being one of them, Helen Tucker Smith, Jack Weeks, Jeanne O'Brien and her husband, Ken Mater, and the Milton Historic Commission or group. Following the April meetings, we again went back to small group format. Those small group format meetings, this was based upon the original plan of 75 units. That small group meeting format discussions led to a coalescing of some important points that the neighborhood, that were important to the neighborhood. I've tried to share with the board as we've gone along, that's the various pieces of communication, in no particular order. Some of those concerns were preservation of the viewscape and historic landscape along Canton Ave. It was very important, both to the neighborhood and to the town, and to the preservation of real estate values, the preservation and restoration of historic structures on the The... That a high-density, four-rent housing use of the property was not desirable. That a conventional two-acre lot, 50-foot right-of-way subdivision was also not desirable. There may be other points. I didn't bring my file in. But from that, and there was a concern on the number of units, specifically because of their visibility from either Canton Ave or a surrounding property. From that, those conversations, from those conversations, we adapted the plan out of respect... This was the first plan. This is what we refer to as the April Plan, where Canton Ave is up to the left. There's, you know, 75 units. We were restoring and rehabilitating three buildings. We had a row of townhomes close to Canton Ave, and overall, it was too much. It was too close to Canton Ave. It was too close to both Carberry and Walker. And there was a concern that it was too much. So, we listened carefully, adapted the plan, and listened to the concerns. The next slide was the June Plan, which reduced it from 75 to 64, namely, we eliminated a roadway closest to Canton Ave. If you can toggle back real quick, you'll see sort of the difference. The orientation of the plans are different. Sorry about that. But the roadway closest to Canton Ave was eliminated in the June Plan, so that we had really a... There's a red line on that plan that represents 250 feet. It's an arbitrary measurement, but effectively, we're saying there are no structures to be within the first 250 feet setback off of Canton Ave. With the... One of the concerns, excuse me, one of the concerns we heard was triplexes. We didn't like the scale amassing of triplexes. Could we do, could we eliminate triplexes? So, this plan is an all duplex plan. It is 64 units. There's no structures within 250 feet of Canton Ave. One of the three buildings that the April Plan called for being rehabilitated and reused has been eliminated, so that just now, the manor house, as we refer to it, and the wallcut house remain to be reused. There is a 100-foot buffer along the Canton Ave side, although there are two duplex structures on the outboard side of the proposal room, the roadway circling around.
Carberry Lane.
Carberry Lane side, yep. This plan also shows a singular curb cut for the entire development located just to the, I'm going to say, north or west of the existing driveway. That came out of a conversation about lining up driveways with abutting properties on the other side of Canton Ave. Probably heard of the story of a car sliding down out of the Carberry property, across Canton Ave, through this person's yard and into a pool.
Actually, the story is that the person thought it was a four-way intersection, was leaving an event on the property, went straight across Canton Avenue, down the driveway, and into a swimming pool.
Wow.
Swimming... That's Jeanne O'Brien's swimming pool. They've removed the swimming pool, and we've moved the driveway away from that and away from the next driveway so that it lines up. It doesn't line up with anybody's driveway, and it's not visible.
Sometime in June, we met with various neighbors, not the entire neighborhood, but various neighbors on this plan, and it was deemed better. The basic message was, we want to see more, more detail, more substance. This is, in my words, a bit of a cartoon. It's a conceptual diagram. It is working off of GIS material, so it is really a planning document. We left the table and said we would come back to you with more information, and that involved commissioning an on-the-ground survey of the property where we found the boundaries, marked stone walls, open field areas, fence lines, existing structures, trees of significance, and surveyed it in a one-foot or 12-inch topographical way. And then proceeded to work the plan, sort of iterative process of having a good, what we call, existing condition survey, a tight map, if you will, and this plan. And we started working it by walking it, walking the property, and planning in the office with topography, going back out to the property and would see a tree that we hadn't picked up, would send a survey crew back out. And we did this in a sort of an iterative process, three or four times, to sort of fit-test the plan. Where is the road? We surveyed where the road was and we critical points. Where were significant trees? Where were certain buildings? So that we could do this, you know, tighten up the planning, if you will. That allowed the next sheet, Tim, the development of what we refer to as the August Plan. The August Plan is again 64 units. It is no longer a uniquely duplex plan. There are five triplex buildings on here, three-unit buildings. What we tried to do is bring some of the buildings that were outward-facing, namely, the two duplex units that were outward-facing toward the Carberry Lane side. If you toggle back, Tim, one more time, you can see them on the sort of the lower side. We brought those inboard. If you can go forward again. And in tightening up the spacing and the alignment of building structures to tighten it up, we found it necessary, at least at this juncture, to integrate back into the plan some triplex structures. And we tried to put them in places where they would be least visible from the external surrounding, the perimeter of the property. Sort of the yellow or the green is intending to be open space. Again, you'll see that we have the 250-foot line off of Canton Ave where there are no structures. We have also developed a 75-foot line. We've tried to develop a hierarchy of open spaces. The hierarchy of open spaces, for instance, if you go out and actually measure where the trees are off of Canton Ave, they're about, they come from the stone wall along Canton Ave, and they go in about 70, it's varying about 75 feet. And in some places, there are open fields. In some places, there are woods. But what was most important in my mind and what we heard from the community is that the viewscape, the historic landscape specifically along Canton Ave be maintained in, to the greatest degree possible, with existing conditions. So, that lower line is intending to be hierarchy one of open space, absolutely no touch. You know, permitted uses might be a walking trail or sidewalk that some have suggested with inside the, within the property, within that 75 feet. The removal of dead or diseased or dangerous kind of trees, although some have suggested that dead trees are good habitat for things, but dangerous trees are not good. So, there might be a hierarchy of permitted and then prohibited uses in that sort of tier-one open space. Tier-two behind it is, it starts to encompass open field areas. So, a permitted use within a tier-two open space area would be the maintenance of an open field, a spring mowing after nesting bird season, or a fall mowing after pollen drop, to maintain that open historic landscape sort of environment, sort of open and closed. The manor house lawn area is again within, beyond 75 feet, and it's a grassed area. So, the notion here is that there can be zones of open space where certain permitted and/or prohibited activities could occur or couldn't occur. You know, most namely, along the Carberry Lane side, we have this thing called the esker, which parallels on the left-hand side of your map, the manor house driveway coming in. It's a large topography of glacial material with white pines on it. You know, that's a no-touch zone. You know, there's no need to go in there. Along the perimeter, the backside of the Carberry Lane neighborhood, along the rear DCR, on the far right, the wallcut path runs up along the far-right side. And in the conversations with DCR, which we've had two, it was important to them and the friends of Blue Hill, it's important to them so that if you're in the DCR, if you're in the state park, or forest, or land, or whatever it's called, that you're not, you know, seeing things. So, that I'm proposing in this that there is sort of tiering of open space where there's certain permitted activities may allow, like a walking trail, or a curb cut, or something like that, the placement of an underground storage device for stormwater management, and then other places where there are prohibited activities, absolutely no touch, no structures, no wholesale cutting and removal of vegetation and the like. The plan is, again, a singular egress in and out of the property in the center. You see that there's a little bit of a wiggle to it. That little bit of a wiggle is a result of the identification of several beech trees and a sugar maple that are keepers, and that we're trying to work around it. It's also to try to provide a little bit of bend in the road so you don't have a long sightline up into the property, that you have relatively, you know, short 175, 100, 125-foot sightline into the property, and then the road starts falling away, so you don't have this direct coursing of a view into the property.
Just with respect to that roadway, as it comes into the property, it actually dips into a swale within the farm meadow, and so the road really disappears from view as it's in the hollow.
The first building that you see as you come up into the property on the right, that's a duplex. That sits on top of what... I'm sorry. My wife is wondering if I meant, got to the cape. Not yet. That building, that proposed building sits on top of what is referred to the Ken Junior House. It's an existing colonial house that you can see from Canton Ave at present. The buildings that go off to the right toward the Walker residence are nestled in a sort of a successionally invaded growth, open field, a lot of white pines. Behind it are a series of beech trees and such that are keepers. The road is attempting to roll around to the left, crosses the stream, intermittent stream, in the same present location of the existing roadway that heads down toward the left there, and then circles back up and around. We're proposing two emergency access rooting, routes out to Carberry Lane, excuse me, Canton Ave. One is using the footprint of the existing manor house driveway. That would be an emergency access driveway only. And the other is the existing driveway on the far right of your plan that accesses the present Walker residence and the wallcut house. Those would remain, if possible, and if in agreement with you and the planning board, I mean, and the fire department, in their current condition, and gated so that they would not be a major thoroughfares. So, we keep the wallcut house and retain and reuse it. We keep the manor house, retain and reuse it. And this plan has, I believe, 30 structures on it, 30 or 31.
30.
30. It also proposes to provide some trail connectivity from the Canton Ave neighborhood and the Carberry Lane neighborhood and the Walker residence neighborhood, if you want to call it that way, up through the property to the center. That's where you kind of see a little sawtooth or a series of teeth at the top to provide a trail access point to get into the DCR lands. The DCR is keenly interested in providing another trailhead there. The neighborhood would like it not to be, you know, a public, if you will, well, public is probably the wrong word, but a, of the same ilk as one of the parking lots that presently exists on 138, that it really is an attempt to provide neighborhood access to the DCR. There is an existing line, faintly see it up there in the upper left, that serves as a pathway from the top of Carberry Lane up into the property. I don't know what we have next. The next is... Oh, yeah. So, the next thing, I'll be quick. Cheryl has asked that we do some 3D modeling. We commissioned, we haven't done the 3D modeling as yet. We commissioned VHB and their visual design department to begin to provide us with a series of attempts to say, what does this look like? And we started with the plain old Jane cross-sectional analysis using the topography that we have. These are very accurate, both horizontally and vertically, and tried to provide some viewscape images to start with. And why haven't I gone to the 3D modeling? There's still some debate as to whether the concept that I'm proposing at the unit count of 64 units is the right concept. It's not something that I'm reluctant to do, but I'm reluctant to do it until I know whether or not I'm heading in a direction that seems sane and I'm not, you know, on a bit of a fool's errand. So, working right, working left to right, you see the dark line, that's Canton Ave. And then there's a series of, I'll call it fence lines, trying to demarcate where 75 feet, 250 feet is where the first building is, the next, you know, sort of cluster of woods, then the next building. The next building on that image looks so big, it's because we're drawing a cross-section through a structure at an angle, whereas the first one, we're going right through it from front to back. The second one, we're going through it at an angle. The yellow building is the wallcut house. So, we... Tim, if you advance me, I won't bore you. We did one at Canton Ave. We've been asked if we could do others at Canton Ave. We've done two along the Carberry Lane, what we refer to as sort of the lower and the upper. You know, upper is really the Smith resident, sort of what are they seeing from their house looking into the property? And the other one is slightly further down the hill.
The yellow ones here are Carberry Lane houses?
Yes, so...
So, that's a view from three and five Carberry Lane, looking up the left side of the esker, over a tennis court that's on the property, and then up to the first house. And you can see on the bottom is graphically depicts, you know, the change in topography and where the topography is at different setbacks. From that dwelling to the property line, it's about 235 feet, and there's an additional almost 400 feet, 300 feet and change from the property line into the first building.
Yeah, now, keep in mind that that line is going at an angle, it's not perpendicular, but because the esker is there, that's really, this is really the view, this is really the view we want to look. So, you know, other things we could do with this visual design analysis is actually stand in the backyard of that yellow house and draw pictures, but we're taking this iteratively. The next one is the upper Canton Ave, doing the same thing. The yellow house is the Smith house. The black line is the property line. The faint light line we see there is trying to show you where the road is, and then where the building is, is the tan or...
That's Carberry Lane on Canton Ave.
Excuse me. Upper Carberry Lane. Thank you, Mary. I'm sorry. Trying to do it faster. And then we did one last one, which is looking back down into the property, again, standing way up at the back. Turns out, this is a six-acre field. We never knew this was a six-acre field. The DCR meeting a couple of weeks ago said this is a really valuable wildlife habitat field, and one of the things they would like to see happen is that field mowed on a regular basis, to maintain it as a field, so it doesn't become overgrown with successional growth of white pines. But anyway, this is attempting to look down into the property from the back of that field. Again, you can kind of see where the property line is, and then where the edge of the road is supposed to be, and then where the first building is. is supposed to be, and then where the first building is. The trees you're there are a little, you know, they're our best guess that you see by looking at aerial maps of where trees are. So, we've planted those. They're not, you know, don't take it literally, but the aerial does tell us that there are, there is some existing vegetation on the DCR property before the property line, and some on the other side. Next slide, please, Tim. This, you've seen this before. We showed you this in April. This is a schematic diagram of a two-acre, an 80,000-square-foot, 200-feet conventional definitive subdivision. I think there are either 21 or 22 lots on here, and sort of a horseshoe and a couple of short cul-de-sacs. There is no attempt to preserve the Walcut or the Manor House here layout. This is, if you will, a proof plan. You know, to really grind it out, we would have to spend some more time. Sorry about the shifting orientation of the drawings, but April to now. So, then, we were asked to look, why aren't we looking at the property through a cluster? So, we studied the cluster and developed a cluster plan. The cluster plan, as you heard for the last hour and a half or so, is an alternative to a definitive use of the property, where the proof plan provides a density, or a lot count, and then the cluster bylaw allows you to configure lots in a different shape. It does, though, require, or mandate, or continue, a single-family lotting scheme, or paradigm, I call it, where you have a conventional subdivision road, you have smaller lots. These are 30,000-square-foot lots. We have, the homes that you see on it are the same footprint of homes that exist presently on...
Carberry Lane.
Carberry Lane.
All we did was put them in there. We have put pools in there, because when you study Carberry Lane, the density of pools is, I don't know what the rationale was, but there's more than one pool in those properties, so we figured this is essentially a Carberry Lane neighborhood. We've been asked, why wouldn't we do 10,000-square-foot lots here, and then we would have far more open space? This is the 35, and we said, well, in our opinion, to maximize the value and to develop a plan that's in character with the neighborhood, that you would develop, you would create lots that are consistent with the fabric of the neighborhood, which is, they're effectively one-acre lots. These are 30,000 square feet. I do not believe that this is a 10,000-square-foot lot district. I'm developing at Southfields, the naval, former naval airbase, where there's 5,075 and 10,000-square-foot lots, and there's zero lot lines, and you're 50 feet wide, or 60 feet wide, with three-foot sideline separations. It's a much different living environment than this section of Canton Ave, in my opinion. But this is, what, 21, 33 lots, of which 10% or three lots would be affordable, whatever that means, and whatever their value is. But three of these lots would be, I guess, reserved as affordable, and I guess, built upon by either me or others. Three major curb cuts, 35% open space. We have tried to mimic some of the important points, like preserving the first 75 feet off of Canton Ave. The escher is the escher. The stream corridor is the stream corridor. That doesn't change. We have tried to salt some open space, you know, along the rear, where it's important to the state park. But this is a version. I've been told it is not a very creative version. And then we, Tim, I think we juxtapose that among the two.
So, a couple of factoids side by side, and I think it is, the factoids are important to at least some in the neighborhood when they're evaluating one plan as opposed to the other. But for 64 units, townhouse plan on the left is 50%, open space plus versus 35% on the right. There are 30 structures on the 64-unit plan as opposed to 33 structures on the subdivision plan. The square footage is very close, is slightly more than 150,000 square feet among the 30 structures containing the 64 townhomes, is about 148,000 square feet in the 33 single-family dwellings. So, from a structure, square footage, inhabited area, we're pretty much equal. It's 33 single families as opposed to 64 couples without children. The impact, tax impact and the impact of schools is dramatic, different. The value impact on the cluster side is net of, is about $930,000-plus to the town in terms of new tax value, the rough calculation that we've done, 30 market units, and assuming one and a half children plus per unit. It's a negative $26,000 return to the town if you do single-family. We did a, one of the things I, in the packet that I sent to you, was a traffic analysis. We counted traffic in May, at the time when we believe most age-restricted condominium developments are most fully occupied. The sunbirds are back from the south, the snowbirds are back from the north, kind of here in the spring, they may head back to the Cape in the summer, but they're most heavily populated in the spring. We counted traffic at Quisset Brook and Home, Inc., which are two probably most similarly situated developments in Milton, and two separate developments in Belmont. We combined, took those actual counts, we averaged them across the 64-unit plan, and we compared them to the trip models for 33 and 22-unit subdivisions. Interesting is that although on a raw basis, there are more trips over the course of the day from a 64-unit development, there are more trips in the peak hour, particularly the afternoon peak, from a single-family subdivision with 33 units as opposed to the 64. Morning peak, they're identical, 33 trips, 33 trips. In the afternoon peak, it's 35 trips and 39 trips. So, on a traffic basis, it nets out better with the cluster as opposed to single-family. So, we think, given all in, those side-by-side comparisons, value to the town, traffic, less impact on Canton Avenue associated with one driver as opposed to three, et cetera, that this is, that the cluster plan proposed is superior. And so, we'd open it from there to questions and comments.
Quick question. You can choose to answer it or not, but as you're the same developer of the Woodmere project, could you speak towards the demographic of the units that have been purchased so far, as far as family versus...
Well, I have six, it's an age targeted by design, not age restricted. I have six purchase and sale agreements in hand presently, out of the 10 units that I'm having the air. The average selling price is $9.57, and everyone is, you know, I didn't ask for their licenses, but I can tell you by looking at them, they're 55-plus, and there isn't a kid.
Okay. Thank you.
What's interesting is, we have two from Milton, two from Canton, and one from Cambridge, and the other one is somewhere on the North Shore that, whose kids live down here.
One of the Milton is a next-door neighbor.
Yeah, one of them, the next-door neighbor.
I'll make a comment, yep. As you know, I'm the chair of our master plan implementation committee. We had, we've been meeting on Monday of this week, and I think it would be beneficial to think of a project of this scale in the context of the master plan, and I think also in the context of the housing production plan. One of the things that is noted in the master plan is how many homes are occupied by elderly, and oftentimes, a widow or a single person. I think there's a large percentage. I think the data's in the housing production plan, which we could pull out, but the lack of options for people, so what, the variety of the housing stock is, was something that's been raised. So, if there were more options for people, if they want to stay in town, their families are in town, you know, that they could age in place, in a place which is single-level living, and universal design could also accommodate people with disabilities. So, you know, there could be some more variety in our housing stock this way. And then it would free up the single-family homes that these people have aged out of, basically, for younger families. So, I think if we could think of, or if you could think of that, and take a look at those, the housing production plan and the master plan, and start to frame some of your thinking based on those, I think it would be helpful. Because the alternative, where you talked about in terms of tax revenue is one thing, but the alternative in terms of what are some of the goals that the town has already said that they want to try and accomplish in terms of housing, I think is another thing, even though it's still comparing a subdivision to a cluster development. So, that's on that end. Then I had a question for you on, if you thought this through yet, Mr. Jack, because when looking at the Pulte proposal, where there's cut and fill balance being looked at, which I've questioned how sensitive that is to the maintaining the character of the existing site and the topography, I'm wondering if you've thought about where you've got some pretty significant change in topography up by Brook Glen in particular.
Well, if I can interrupt you.
Yeah.
If I can be so humble to say, that was something that I tripped over with the St. Pius site, particularly, Mike expressed a lot of concern over it, it was a question in the fit test, fit testing, that I put forth to the engineer, and the answer is yes. I have a drawing that we, she's provided me with, okay, this is plus one or plus two, at least as it relates to the road, working all the way around. And our very, I'll say, high level, because that's as much as we've done, the high-level view was, it was better than our, than we might have interpreted or anticipated, so...
So, for example, if you were to cut a section that was sort of, you know, following this curve, are these buildings stepping down, you know, the site as the topography steps down? Or are you going to cut and level and cut and level and cut and level?
Understood.
Yeah.
Well, if I have the opportunity to come back, I will bring what I have and or think it through further. But we have exactly that curve to be, I can tell you.
Because the success of that plan is, it's critical to understand how you're dealing with it.
How you integrate it with the property.
Yeah.
I would, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Pretty, and you picked the most difficult place, obviously.
All right. Because I see all the lines there.
So, that, I will tell you, that that area is the right place to look in, and if you see the little road that's sort of cutting through the middle, you know, and you go from the Manor House, there's a hill climb up in there that needs to be, you know, you need to, we, I need to understand, I need to be able to explain to you that it works or doesn't work, or how it doesn't work.
Right. I see that.
Because there's a, if you can see the topography in there, there's a jump.
Well, I mean, that was the reason I asked about the site model, because of the topography here, and we'll better be able to understand it. But I will say that it seems to me, with the information that you've gathered from your underground site survey, you've adjusted your plan quite a bit, and I'm, and I think the sort of, this arbitrary 250 feet, I think, needs to have a little bit more thought as to why that line would be 250 everywhere, and would it move, you know, up Casey Farm Meadow, for example? You know, that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, I'm just curious, we heard from Mr. Walker, the abutter here, about the roadway, and I want to ask you about that, and then just generally, how the Carberry Lane neighbors are responding to this plan. So, is this roadway fixed? Can it move over? What's your sense about that? And then, how the Carberry neighbors, Carberry Lane neighbors...
So, the roadway on the far right is only, it's where the roadway exists presently.
Okay.
And we are not proposing to improve it.
Change it, okay.
Change it, relocate it, or use it for any purpose other than emergency access and egress.
So, this is the manner which that abutter accesses their property currently, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is a deeded easement.
Okay.
For access.
And then, the neighbors on Carberry Lane, and how they're responding to this revised plan?
It's still a conversation in process. I would say that there is some level of acceptance of the plan and the response that we have provided to the comments that we, they provided to us. And there is, at least, some level of articulation that, nice, thank you, still too many units.
There's a mix. There's still some scratching at the unit count, and, but there are, there's fairly significant, I will say at least a significant minority of abutters are fully on board with the plan.
And may I just ask, the unit count, the impact...
I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Significant minority are...
Of abutters are on board with the plan.
Minority?
Significant minor, I can only speak to what I understand.
No, you're being, you're being very confused. So, there is a minority that support it.
There's a, we think it's...
Majority oppose it.
We think it's majority in favor, but we can only understand today that there's at least a significant minority of director abutters in favor. There hasn't been a, you know, we haven't had a vote.
We've had two community meetings, August 24th and September 7th, and then a site walk on September 11th, where all of this has been published, and we've had the same sort of presentation. I've asked for a follow-up meeting with, if you will, the spokesfolks for the, for that, for the neighborhood, and I was, it was suggested that I wait a bit to give them some time, I'm presuming, give them some time to digest what we have before them at present, before a meeting.
We understand that there is a meeting.
One more thing.
We understand there's a meeting scheduled within the neighborhood before the end of the month, and they've asked us to hold until early October to meet with them.
Can I just follow up, two more things, sorry. The, one has to do with, what is the concern over the number of units in particular?
Don't know.
Okay. And then, the other is, what did you say the dimension was, that the tightest point here between the road and the property line?
What are you pointing to, Cheryl?
Sorry. The here.
Carberry Lane?
Carberry Lane, the...
Carberry Lane side, the setback is a minimum of 100 feet.
It's about 125 feet to the edge of the road.
125?
What Alan or Deb gave us when we, Alan said when we were at the first neighborhood meeting.
And is that something that you could get in there and stake so that the...
We did.
You did stake that roadway?
We done that.
Roadway is staked. If I had a laser, I could show you where it's staked, but it's staked in critical places all the way around.
And is that part of what the neighbors saw?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sorry.
So, what about the Walker property?
Walker property is in the lower, as we look at this plan up here, it is in the lower right, sort of see the piece of tile that's chunked out?
I can see his driveway.
Missing tooth.
So, what's the buffer there?
Well, you, so his driveway is on our property, so you see, you understand how he gets in? So, the first unit is, the closest unit to him is the one to the left, and to be honest with you, I don't know how far that is, but it's a long way. There is a property behind him, you know, climbing up that is closer. That one's probably 100, that's the closest, is 100 feet, but there's also topography and very, very dense woods in there, and his house actually is oriented the other direction.
Is this this gray outline, the side of his home?
Yes.
So, what's the distance between his home and the roadway?
The scale here shows the roadway to his...
The, the, the scale here shows the roadway to his, to the property line to be, I don't know, about 40 feet.
Yep.
His house would be about, according to the scale there, would be about 140 feet.
Yeah.
And I think it's from his property line to the duplex that's above him is about 100 feet.
That's his driveway, if I recall, from the site walk.
His driveway comes off, you can see where it comes off.
Yeah.
This is his garage, I guess, is what I'm saying, that, that the closest thing to the, it's not the living space, I guess, you know, because that's where the garage is.
But it's 20 foot between the road and his property line.
At that corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty tight.
So, there's, it's 10:33 PM, there's some people in the audience, I wonder if they're here to speak, aren't they?
There's no requirement to have them speak, but we can certainly ask, yeah.
I'm just curious, because we've asked a lot of questions about what the neighbors think, I don't know, maybe they're neighbors.
Anybody here to speak on this?
Nope.
So, I'm Tony Chikello, I'm here...
Yeah, come up and do the mic, please, so we don't get yelled at by the TV, by cable.
Those TVs.
Up and be famous, Tony, join the pack.
All right, great, thanks.
No, we extended.
So, I'm Tony Chikello, I'm here as an attorney, I'm working with Jack Weeks, and we've been working with some of the other neighbors. Jack Weeks is on the bottom corner of the Carberry Lane, right adjacent to the Carberry property. So, obviously, Jack and his neighbors have been very concerned about this project, and he's had me sort of working and looking at what's going on with this for, for many, many months. I, I know that Jack had a lot of concerns about this as it was first proposed, and expressed a lot of these concerns to Ned and to Jack Dolly. I think at this point, Jack and a number of his other neighbors think that the, the plan is workable, and that, as proposed, you know, we're, we're pretty much getting there. I think the concern is, the devil's in the details, and holding every, in, what are, what are the effects? What are the aesthetics? And how are we going to make sure this project, if it goes forward, doesn't adversely impact the neighborhood, or minimize the adverse impacts to the neighborhood? You know, I, I think part of the way that a number of the neighbors are looking at this is that, you know, the buyer of the property, you know, Mr. Carberry now, and Mr. Dolly and his company now own at, at least a portion of this property, and the rest is under agreement, they have a right to develop the property. And I think, from everyone that I've heard in that neighborhood, two-acre subdivision up there would be a disaster. It, it would, it would be, just destroy the character of what is just a phenomenal property. So, if you start with that assumption, that, that's really a bad idea, and something can happen up there, the question is, what kinds of things could happen? What makes sense? And how can you minimize the impact? So, I think right now, Jack and, and a number of the other neighbors think that the, that the developer has been responsive to a number of their concerns, and we've had some ability to really work with Jack and with Ned to try to make this a plan that, that the neighborhood, we think, at the end of the day, hopefully can support. I, I know that the folks that I'm working with think they can, and will continue to push to minimize the impacts, to make sure the aesthetics are as best that they can be, and, and to really make it a plan that makes sense for the neighborhood. So, it's late, I don't, I won't take any more time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that we have said to the neighbors in several meetings, that 64 units will be the fewest number of units built on this property, and so, that's an important consideration that the neighborhood has had to think about, and it, and it, and they're wrapping their heads around that. And so, 64, as opposed to some other number, means something. 64 as opposed to 33 means something, we think the impacts of 33 are much more significant, we think this is a better plan.
Ms. Noble?
My name's Mary Noble, I have family property on Canton Avenue. We're not direct abutters, but we are very much aware of being very near to this new proposed development. I think that it's been very well summed up, but I would like to also stress that we're concerned about the impact of the traffic, which is inevitable. There's a lot of speeding on Canton Avenue, I can hardly get out of the driveway at 1514 without sometimes people honking at me because they're coming so fast, I haven't anticipated them. And I think the other major concern that I would add is, how can we be sure that the proposals don't get changed behind our backs? And so, that if there are any changes that seem to need to be incurred, we at least have a chance to say, wait a minute, that's not what you promised us. So, I don't know how that gets worked into being some part of the contract, that there's real oversight. Thank you.
Just address that for a minute, you can, you can sit if you'd like, but, you know, as far as, you know, I'm not sure what, I think when you talk about a contract, you're talking about this...
A proposed.
Development agreement or something, that I haven't really spent any time with at the moment. But from this board's standpoint, you know, we would be, we're still just in the conceptual stage, as I said at the beginning of the hearing tonight during Citizen Speak, nothing's really in front of us.
I understand that.
So, we will be endorsing or not endorsing, we're assuming we're going to be endorsing or not endorsing some sort of zoning provision that's going to come before us, that would serve as a contract to govern the land, and then certainly any special permit that came before us would be a further contract that would govern that land and set forth pretty, pretty significant provisions. So, that gives you our public process for considering any zoning as an opportunity to have your voices heard. Town meeting, you certainly would have the opportunity to have your voices heard, and then the special permitting process would also be a public process where your voices could be heard. So, there's a lot of checks and balances along the way for you to be in front of this body and other bodies to make sure that you're, you're getting what was, what you thought you were getting.
Thank you.
If I could just speak very quickly, the, in the pact that I gave you is a copy of a draft of a development agreement that is based on a development agreement that was entered into in Weston.
Mm-hmm.
I know I mentioned it previously, and the board has legitimate concerns about tying the board's hands before it gets to the board. There may have been some misunderstandings that evening, this is a development plan that would only be entered into if the board were endorsing a conceptual plan, the neighbors would be endorsing. It was intended to identify an entity with the authority to enforce the restrictions that are provided in the plan. The idea of it came from Tony and his client, Mr. Weeks, who wanted an agreement. Well, who can enforce it, and under what circumstances?
And we'll take a look at that. You've addressed the board's concern, which is, I think...
The other issue...
We'll look at it, the board won't be bound by it, but certainly we understand the, the spirit of it. Cheryl, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a question, how that would relate to bylaw language that would go to town meeting? I mean, that would be the precursor to the bylaw language?
Yes.
Okay.
Or would come together.
Because, would you have two different documents that are enforceable in different ways? That's what I'm wondering.
The notion is, is that the development agreement, it serves as a roadmap to develop a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Which would then supersede.
Right. And then, just to the question about after that, then it's the more detailed application that would be reviewed here at the Planning Board and Conservation Commission and Historic Commission before the, you know, before they could go forward, you know, so, and that would have a lot more detail before that special permit could be issued.
I mean, for example, in, in Weston, there was an actual, you know, pick one of my drawings, my draw, one of my drawings was attached to that, a development agreement, and it served as a comfort level by which a board and a neighborhood could then write a zoning bylaw. It was enforceable, and you didn't, something, nothing got changed behind your back. And that's, I don't, that can't happen anyway, but...
So, I guess the other thing about it would be that the, the things that would be of concern to the neighbors, to the abutters, would need to be addressed, at least in the language of that agreement, and to a certain extent, I guess, in the diagram, right? But the diagram, obviously, is going to change as you get into more...
Say, specific, from specific, right.
Yeah, so, would you be looking to do anything in between the agreement and the bylaw in terms of further site analysis and design? Or would this be what's attached?
That which is necessary to get to yes.
Okay.
So, it's almost 11 o'clock, I'd like to move in a direction here, and, so, you know, I think you, you pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, that I believe you said there are six hearings before a deadline for a potential town meeting in the winter. So, I look towards you to probably move this thing along so that we can get, get the process rolling, because if we get down to three or four hearings, it's going to start to get pretty tight.
Our, our intent is to come back before you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
The, the, the traffic indicator, it, it, it says it's for age-restricted homes. These are not going to be age-restricted homes.
They can be...
I understand what you're saying about their design intent was to attract...
The conversation that we've been having with the neighborhood is, it would be an age-restricted community.
So, it will be?
Yep.
Okay. The, one of my big concerns is the, the backup of the traffic, because I know I've, I've sat there, and it backup, it backs up from Blue Hill Ave, which becomes Brushhill Road up there, at Canton Ave backs up well beyond this property. In other words, if you wanted to come out of the property and take a left, you wouldn't be able to get out for, for a good hour at a time, unless somebody lets you out, you weren't getting out.
Mike, that traffic backs up on Canton Ave all the way through town. I live off of Canton Ave, and I travel Canton Ave, and it's, this development will contribute a minor, well, I'm sorry, whatever you think about how much it'll contribute, the, the traffic is not really just limited to there, it's all the way down Canton Ave.
No, but that intersection going out onto 138 during peak hours, yeah.
Extremely misleading.
Sorry.
Canton Ave's a very long street, and I know there's a lot of traffic on Canton Ave, but that light, Brushhill Road contacts...
Right, 138, yeah.
Blue Hill Ave backs up to a complete standstill, complete standstill, for periods of time, you could sit there for five to six, seven minutes, while moving well beyond this property.
Right.
Well beyond this property.
And the real issue...
To say that the, the highlight of Canton Ave is like that is a complete misleading if people listen to that, because they, I would assume most people that live in this town will listen, understand that.
I travel Canton Ave every day, Mike.
I, I, so do I, Cheryl, so do I, every day.
So, what I, what I do know...
So, I'd like to see, in the, in here, they reference intersections that are out on Blue Hill Ave and in Canton, in Blue Hill Ave that are on the borderline of Canton, but yet they make no reference to the intersection that would most be impacted.
Actually, I can, I can speak to that, because Giles Ham and I met with MassDOT's traffic engineers on that. There is clear recognition that the intersection that causes the problem is the Royal Street intersection that, where Reebok comes out. That does not flush enough volume, southbound in the evening, and so, everything backs up. You also have one lane in each direction between Blue Hill Avenue and, when you get to the Dunkin' Donuts, because it's got conservation land on both sides.
Then it opens up, yeah.
And then it opens up. What Mass have is, what Mass High Dot has, has done, is given Giles the signal information for how the sequencing works, why it works, and Giles is studying alternatives to that for Mass Highway to look at, so that they can adjust, think about adjusting the, the signal lengths in Canton, also looking at how the signals work at Brushhill Road and Blue, and Canton Avenue, because one of, one of the ideas is to create a left, protected left turn from Canton Avenue into there.
You're kind of making my point, Ned, because they don't address...
No, it's...
Brushhill Road and Canton Avenue. Or I can't find it, and I, all apologies if I'm wrong, because I've just said a minimal amount of time to try to get through it, but...
Right, the, so, there are two issues. The primary issue is Royal Street. The secondary issue is, is Brushhill Road and Blue Hill Avenue and Canton Avenue.
Well, I'll take that one, great.
If you're not flushing traffic between that intersection and the next light, when the light turns green at Canton Avenue, there's nowhere for the traffic to go.
Yeah, but there, there is definitely a queuing issue.
There is.
Turning left onto 138.
And both, and we are committed to studying that.
In the morning in particular.
What I, I'd like to see is us get an independent traffic analysis, because what I see happening here is, they're going to end up, they're going to say, well, we need to come back and put a, a traffic signal. When I, how busy you think Canton Ave is, when, when I moved to Milton, there was no signal light at Canton Ave and Blue Hills Parkway, and I didn't think it was that bad. But now there's a signal, that's fine. What I see happening here is they're telling us, now, in order to mitigate it in front and behind of this problem, you're probably going to need a traffic signal at Doll Lane in Canton Ave.
No.
Well, no, yes, no, I don't know the answer to that. Maybe you're right.
Strike that, you're right. Whatever the study, whatever the analysis will be done.
I didn't know, you had already done that and understood that?
We haven't done that analysis.
Okay, okay.
All we've done is talked about the way...
Then I'd rather not say definitive things, that we don't know what's definitive.
Correct. All we've talked about with MassDOT is how 138 works.
So, I'd like to see an independent on this, because I, I, I've done, I've dealt with Mr. Venice before, many years ago, on a project in Quincy, where he stood in front of me, and I told him, your, your, your conclusion doesn't match your data, and, and finally, when he sat down, slowed down in a meeting, many people finally said, well, I didn't write this. Well, I said, well, your name's on it. What do you mean? It doesn't matter if you wrote it or not, you put your name on it. But we need an independent, because I think the traffic is probably one of the, one of, if not the most significant impact here. With that said, you know, it doesn't, attractive is one thing, but congestion's another.
One thing I would mention...
One other thing I'd just like to ask you, were you saying earlier that Mr. Walker was requesting that you pay him for the depreciation of his land?
Yes. Mr. Walker asked me for land and $2 million.
When we said no, he declared war.
No, he, when I said no, he said the price is $3 million.
I, fair enough.
Okay?
I just want to...
You're going to go to the Cape, thank you very much, we'll be back.
Thank you.
The move that we adjourn.
I guess we don't have anybody else to speak with.
I guess I had a comment, but that's okay. Can you hear it next time?
I, I do want to mention something for the board to hear.
We have a motion, we need to...
I want to mention something with the board, just a comment to Mike.
A non-negotiable motion, so if there's no second, that's fine, but if I have to entertain it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.